On July, dated July 26, 2021. This is being recorded on.
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, sorry. You can't, summer. This is being recorded on SMAC and it is also being livestreamed for folks to watch on SMAC's website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so, thank you for coming. We have Dr. Rob here this evening. We're very excited to have you. This will be our first interview for the evening. I'll just give you just a little insight as to what the setup of the meeting will be. So we'll ask you for the first five minutes to just give yourself your own introduction, give us a little information about yourselves, as some of us haven't had the opportunity to hear from you yet. And then, the school committee, we have prepared questions. You have the copy in front of you. We'll go through those questions and we'll ask you the questions and then we'll give you an opportunity to make a closing statement. Okay? Great, so, we have school committee members. I'll start down this end, just so you're familiarized. This is Fabian. Fabian Francois-Maurasette. This is Anita Hill, Sandra Gropey, Katie Peanut Anokian, and Joe McDonough. Great, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, we need to open the meeting.
I'm not me.
Oh, we were trying to trick him.
I was translating. I was getting there.
Well, that's so funny. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, so can we get a motion to go into public?
Can I make a motion to go into public session?
To, for, yes.
For the interview process for Dr. Rob.
Second.
Great, and all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Wonderful. Okay, great, thank you so much. We'll hand it to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. I'm very, very happy to be here this evening. This has been a career-long dream for me, lifelong dream for me, and unfortunately for the members who are on the screening committee, this is the same opening statement I gave a few weeks ago, but I think it really summarizes what I've been doing and for the community and for the committee. Two overarching themes to why I'm sitting here today, one personal and mostly professional. From a personal point of view, this is the perfect time in my life to be here. My youngest is eighteen and a half. He just graduated from Hanover High School. He's heading off to Stonehill. I understand the seventy-five, eighty-hour weeks that are involved in this position, and when my own kids were in middle school and high school, I knew that I wouldn't be able to have the time. My daughter was a varsity athlete. My son was, he was working very hard in high school. Now, my oldest, I have three children. My oldest is twenty-four. He's successfully launched, living in New York. It's wonderful. He's an electrical engineer. And my daughter just graduated from the Air Force Academy, and she's going to be starting at Dartmouth Medical School next week, believe it or not. So, I have the time in my life. I can devote my time to this. My wife, my father-in-law, was a school administrator. She understands the time involved. And so I just think from a personal point in my life, I'm ready to take the next steps. If you were to ask the Mass State Retirement Board, they would tell you, "I have eight years to go until I can retire." If you were to ask Mrs. Robb, she would tell you, "It's more like twelve." And so, we're going to split the difference and go with twelve. That's probably not really splitting the difference, but it's more, more like twelve. So what that tells me and tells you is that I'm here for the long haul. I don't have any aspiring needs beyond being superintendent here in Stoughton. This is what I've wanted to do, and I want to see your kindergarten, first grade graduate high school. That's what I'm here for, and I really would very, very happily continue and end my career here in Stoughton. So I see that as a, you know, twelve-year trajectory where I really can make a difference. And looking at your, again, to jump into the professional, but looking at your master plan and some of the work you want to do with South Elementary School, I know from having been through two building projects with the MSBA, those are three-to-five, six-year commitments, and you need somebody to bring you through that steadily. And so I want to be able to commit to that, and even further in your master plan, as you look at the other elementary schools and the middle school. I see that within the scope of my career here in Stoughton. And finally, on a personal letter, personal level, I'm a Holy Cross Crusader. You guys are the Black Knights. I was done at that point, but, you know, I think that connection to me is important because I'm looking for those connections. I'm looking for a way to personalize the experience and to be, and to be a real member of the community. From a professional point of view, I read through your triennial plan, I read through your master plan, I read all of the school improvement plans, I read the high school plans, and the consistency around social-emotional learning, mental health, diversity, technology, COVID recovery, of course, all resonated with me and resonated with my own priorities. I was a guidance counselor for ten years. I understand social-emotional learning long before it was fashionable, and I understand that that is a critical component to preparing students to be able to learn. And to the extent that we can make sure that their social-emotional health is intact, that's going to give them the readiness to take the instructional challenges that we offer them. As a business manager for the last seven years, the first thing I read was your budget, because it gives me a sense of the educational priorities of any community. And I vowed, when I took this interview, I said, "I'm not going to talk about money all night." You, you know, we'll certainly talk about money, but it's the role of superintendent, that's a piece of it, but it's certainly not the whole thing. Your budget is centered around curriculum. It's centered around instruction. You may not be aware of it, but not all budgets are written that way. Many of them are written building-based, they're written in different kinds of ways. Your budget is written with a STEM focus, with a humanities focus, and then with individual departments represented. Where you put your money is where your priorities are, anywhere, and that is very evident. It's also very transparent. It's very clear where the budget priorities are here in Stoughton, and to me, that's important. We'll talk about transparency later. I'm sure it's embedded in these questions, but to me, one of the things that I was asked to do when I became business manager back in 2014 in Hanover, and I had been principal for six years at the high school, was really talk a lot about transparency. And so we published a line item budget at that time. I put, just like you do, we put out every line of the budget, we showed the community, "This is what your money is going to." Talk to me all day, let's have conversations about budget priorities. That transparency allowed the community then to know that I was credible and that what I was saying, I was going to do. Now, the trick to that is doing what you said you were going to do. So in the, over the last seven years, as they've seen me develop and implement budgets, they've seen that I've been able to do what I said. If we said this is going to be spent on this particular issue or whatever, we made sure we did it. Professionally, I've done two MSBA building projects. I was part of the Hanover High School building project. We opened that building ten years ago in 2011. I still refer to it as the new Hanover High School. Very few people in Hanover do, but because we also just built a brand-new Center Elementary School, which was a renovation and addition. Different situation. We needed to expand. We had a very, very old building, a one-hundred-year-old building that needed to be closed, and so we put an addition on to the elementary school, and the MSBA approved it as a renovation and addition, but very similar to what you're looking at. You know, they made us look at all of our elementary schools. Now, we only had three, but they made us look at the elementary schools, make us decide, "What are you going to leave open? What are you going to close? How are you going to consolidate? Are you going to consolidate?" Those are tough, tough questions for a community to grapple with. And the MSBA, in some ways, makes you ask those tough questions, but once you've been through the process and once you've been through the whole financial analysis and educational analysis, as a community, you come out a much stronger place with whatever decision you're going to make. I did that in Hanover, not only through the high school process, but certainly through the Center Elementary School process. We followed a very different path than what you're looking for. We went to a grade-level system. We only had, like I said, the three elementary schools. Very different situation with five, but I've done it. I've done an educational plan at the elementary level. I've certainly done it at the high school level. I also know what to look for in a new high school. And so, you know, when you're in an older building, people sometimes let things go, and when they come into a new building, and I, if I read everything correctly, your new high school's been open for two years, give or take? Okay, I know that, I tried to get a sense of it from the, from the website. But oftentimes, if something leaks, or something doesn't work, or something breaks, if you're in a mindset where, you know, you kind of make do, people will not report things. And I always had to remind people in the new Hanover High School, "If something's broken, you got to let us know immediately. Don't let it go. The expectations are higher, but we want to keep this building now for another fifty or seventy-five years." So how do we do that? And how do we make sure we don't fall into the same problems that ended up with having to close the prior school? So I understand that break-fix mentality that you need to have. I also know what it's like to build it and they will come. I'm sure you're experiencing that at the new Stoughton High School. If you haven't, you're going to. Where everybody's going to want to be there. Everybody's going to have meetings there. Local dance clubs are going to want to use the auditorium, and how do you manage that? The local youth sports is going to want to use the gym, the, the brand-new turf field. I took a ride last Friday afternoon. I drove through the campus, just gorgeous, absolutely gorgeous. And, and everybody wants to be on it and work on it, and so how do you maintain that and keep it looking new? Like I said, I'm ready to dive into the South project. I've done the educational plan at Center Elementary School. I worked on that team. I was part of the building project, again, in my role as business manager, but also because I was a principal and particularly interested in, in elementary, they let me get very involved in the, the work that we did, not only the furniture, but in the curriculum and everything else that we bought for the school. And the last thing I'll say as an introduction, and I probably already blown the ten minutes out of the water, is your triennial plan also resonates with me. Adopting around balanced literacy, something very similar we just did in Hanover. We do the workshop model for literacy in Hanover at the elementary level. As a matter of fact, I think four or five years ago, when we were doing the same research you were, I'm almost positive, there was a group from Stoughton that worked with Hanover to kind of, we all worked together on the approach. So I'm familiar with the workshop model. Over the last couple of days, I've actually downloaded some of Lucy Culkin's work to kind of revamp myself back up and figure out what it was about so that I could be articulate and conversant in it with the teachers. The Learning Commons, it's right on the cusp of what we're doing in education right now. We're talking about maker spaces. We're talking about opportunities for students to really have a space where they can be free and talk and learn and explore. Your elementary learning commons, the MSBA is going to eat that up, and it will be an opportunity for this community to really showcase quality elementary learning. So, for all those reasons, I feel very, very ready to be here. I'm excited about the diversity here, I have to tell you. I worked in Amityville at the beginning of my career. Amityville is a community on the South Shore of Long Island. I grew up on Long Island, and as I relax, my Long Island accent will inevitably come out. I'll try to temper it as much as I can, but I've been up here now for twenty-four years. And that community is predominantly black. It's seventy percent black high school. And one of the things I said early on, and I know we're going to talk about diversity, so I'll let the question kind of happen naturally, is in New York, the staff is much more representative of the students. I was more accustomed to that. So when I was on Long Island, there was a, four guidance counselors, two were black, two were white, two assistant principals were black, the assistant superintendent was black, many of the staff. I was accustomed to that diversity in the staff, and it reflected, to a large extent, the student body. Certainly wasn't seventy-thirty, but it was better than it is in most of Massachusetts. When I moved up here, I started in Marshfield, a more diverse community, and then into Norwood, and didn't see the same diversity among the staff and the students. And it's something that we've always been struggling to try to hire more. So when I heard a recent school committee meeting where the middle school principal here has been working closely with the Mass Partnership on Diversity to try to recruit more staff, it's an area where not only am I committed to, but I can contribute to and, and help, and help people understand what that looks like. So again, I'm very excited to be here. I could keep talking and talking, but why don't we do the questions and more things will come out as we, we do, we do the questions.
Great, thank you. We'll start down this end.
Hi, thank you for the introduction. My name is Fabian, and commenting on your understanding of social and emotional learning, my first question is related to that. Have you had to deal with children and families in distressful situations without identifying anyone? Can you tell us of situations where the social and emotional needs of children and their families moved you to action?
Almost every time. I think when, when you're a guidance counselor and you work with at-risk families, there's always an opportunity, not only to help that family, but to, but what can change in a school? What can we do in the school to make it more safe, not only for that family, but safe for families in, in that area? So, to try and think of a couple of examples, without, again, it's hard because Hanover's not that far away. So it, I think... In general, so it's easy for me to talk about it in general, when we're dealing with students that are at risk and students who have become addicted to drugs. Let's, let's stick with that, because there's many examples of a student who, in ninth grade, seems to be doing fine, and then their grades start to go down, their peer relationships start to change, and you see some warning signs that maybe they're involved in substance abuse. And so how do you begin to deal with that and talk to that family? Because if it's their oldest and they have had no experience with it, you know, you, whether it's the principal or the guidance counselor or the assistant principal, if you're making that first contact with the family and saying, "I'm concerned. There's something going on here. The grades are slipping. Friends that he or she used to have, they don't have anymore. They're making statements to other friends that are concerning. Maybe they don't rise to the level of a, you know, suicidal ideation, but they're certainly concerning." And so I've been able to, so for the family, what I find is we, we work with outside agencies, and so in, in Hanover, we would often hook up with BAMZ or we'd hook up with an outside agency. Our own guidance counselors had plenty of opportunities for referrals. We'd stabilize the situation as best we could. There were certainly times when I rode in ambulances with students, you know, who had either almost overdosed or had been in a situation where they were certainly at risk in school, and we stabilized that family. Then we say to ourselves, "All right, that family had that issue, but that's not the only problem. What else is going on here in the school, in the community? What else do we need to look at?" And when I was principal, and this was probably 2011, 2012, we brought in Chris Heron, who is, is a local speaker. He, he's, he's worked with, with students, and we said, "We need somebody who can be a little more relatable to the kids." You know, even when I was forty, I'm fifty-three now, even when I was forty, I was still too old for them. So, you know, they said, "We need somebody more relatable." And so we brought a couple of speakers in. He's the one that comes to mind right off the top of my head, but we brought a couple of speakers in over the years to talk to the students about substance abuse. We actually had a program, and I did not spearhead it, I certainly supported it and made sure that it, it happened, but our adjustment counselor brought in some recovering addicts from a local, a local place that, where they were recovering. These are young adults, you know, twenty-five, twenty-six years old, but with some pretty horrific stories, and stories that are beyond what a normal Hanover High or even Stoughton High student, I think, would experience. And it gave the students a chance to see somebody on the other side. So somebody who had been through an addiction, had been through, you know, still recovering, still working through the addiction, but they're starting, they got a job, or they're, they're, you know, having a young family, or whatever the situation is, our students got to see, this isn't necessarily life-ending, that you can recover and be in recovery, and what does that mean? So to take it both from an individual family perspective, but then also, "How does that move me to action?" It really is looking at the whole school and what can we do to raise awareness for the whole school, and those are some of the ways that we did it over time.
All questions? Welcome, Dr. Robb. How would you develop your plan to prepare for and begin your superintendency? How would you develop your entry plan and prepare for your first few weeks, months, or for your first year? Whom would you consider to be essential sources of information, critical friends, and strategic allies?
Thank you for asking the question. I, I'm going to hit the ground listening, and I know I'm, I'm playing with the pun a little bit, but the idea is, when, anytime I've started in a new community, and I've been lucky in my career, I haven't made too many transitions. I've been in Hanover for thirteen years. The best thing I can do is listen. I certainly have my experience. I have twenty-seven years in public education. I've, I've been through a lot. Before COVID, I would have told you, nothing you're going to throw at me I haven't handled, but now with COVID, I can't say that anymore. So, you know, I, I've been through a lot, and I bring that experience with me, but I certainly don't have experience here in Stoughton. And so my first, first thing I'm going to do, and I'll spend the better part of a year listening, and that's actually part of the entry plan. So one of the components of the entry plan is just that. Who am I going to listen to? Who am I going to reach out to? Certainly, I'm going to reach out to everybody here at this table. I'm going to reach out to school administration. I'm going to reach out to the stakeholders that you would expect me to reach out to, students, student council, the administration, the police chief, the fire chief, that, you know, the town manager, the select board, all of those people that I know are going to be able to provide me. But I'm also going to go to football games. I'm going to go to cultural events. I'm going to go to basketball games. I'm going to go to lacrosse games. I'm going to be out and about in the community on the weekends and in the evenings. I'm going to go to youth games as well. I, I certainly love watching a good basketball game, but what I'm going to be doing there is also meeting people. I want to meet those people. I want to go to them. I'm not going to expect them to come to me. I'm going to be going to them. So the first thing I'm going to be doing is listening. The other part of the entry plan is really going to be to dig into your triennial plan. So again, you may not be aware of this because you're in the middle of it, but Stoughton has a very, very tight set of documents that lay out exactly what your priorities are from an educational perspective as well as a financial perspective. And it may seem normal to you, that's great. It's not the case everywhere. And so I was able to read through your improvement plans and particularly your triennial plan. I'm sure COVID has thwarted some of year two of the triennial plan to a large degree. So a big part of my entry plan is going to be to really tick through the, the triennial plan for this whole fiscal '22, which is technically the third year of it, but let's find out where we're at. The goals that you wrote are very, very smart, and I'm not saying that tongue-in-cheek. They are. They're very measurable. So as a result, it's not that hard for me to evaluate it, because I can go through and look at all of those smart goals and see exactly where, where we are. You know, putting a workshop literacy program in place is wonderful on paper. It takes years to get to a point where that is running and you have collaborative communities of teachers working together in an environment like that. So where are we at? You know, no judgment. Where are we at? And that's going to be my attitude, kind of, where are we at with each of these? Where are we at? You made a pretty significant financial commitment to English language learners, and I understand the population is, is growing, but, you know, where are we at with that financial commitment? Have we been able to keep that commitment stable? There's a whole component of an assessment system. There was a very brief time in Hanover where, where I, as a parent, could go in and see all the test scores of any one of my three kids, whether it was MCAS or I-Ready or any of the test scores. That's an extraordinarily tough thing to pull off, not only finding the right program, but making sure that all of the data is always being put in there and kept current for parents, and even more importantly, in a lot of ways, for the teachers to be able to access, so that they can look at their own class, at their own students, and be able to know exactly where those students are at when they arrive and as they go through the grade. So those are the two big part of the entry plan, is really going to be listening, really you have a strong plan, and one of the things that I learned way early in my career is plan your work and work your plan. I said that at the, at the screening committee, and I do the same thing in my own career. You can see, I, I do my homework. I always have homework with me. That is how I'm going to put the entry plan together. So it's going to be listening, it's going to be on my feet, visiting, finding things. I want to know everything I can find out about Stoughton, what's out there, where are the community centers? I don't have a good sense of kind of how the community lays out. I want to learn that. You know, I want to visit the different parts of the community. So I'm, I'm just looking forward to all of that. So those are the essentials sort of information. I do have a lot of, when you call critical friends or strategic allies, I know many, many of the superintendents and assistant superintendents on the South Shore and in Metro West. Dr. Galligan, who is the principal of Norwood High School, trained with me in Hanover. He was my assistant principal in, in Hanover, and I was very proud to see him go on to Norwood and be principal of Norwood High School. So I, I know a lot of people in the area. I think they can inform what I do, but more important than just using my own professional contacts, it's really just going to be what's going on here. I want to hit the ground here. You're going to see me everywhere. At town hall, it's not unusual in Hanover for me to be walking the halls of town hall. They're used to seeing me there. You know, I've been in the police station, I've been in the fire station, and, you know, they know I'm there. I know, it's just common, and, and that's what you're going to see here, too. You're going to see me on my feet, out and about. I'm also going to be in the schools a lot, so they're going to get used to that. When we opened up the schools back in January and February, and we brought the, we phased in, just like many schools did, and we brought the third and fourth grade back at one point toward the end of January, and I went into one of the fourth grade classrooms, and it was very comfortable for the fourth grade teacher to welcome me in, and she knew that I was going to be there, and it wasn't evaluative, that wasn't my role, but it was just to say hi to the kids, welcome them back. You could see all the smiling faces. I could tell, even behind the masks, how happy they were to be back to school. And because I had been in the school, she knew that, you know, this was a very comfortable thing. So I'm going to be in the schools as much as I can and really want to see what's going on. I'm a very much a, I'd say hands-on, but I don't want to be scared by that. It's, it's really just kind of, I roll up my sleeves and I want to see what's going on. You know, in Hanover, they would tease me if there was a, a bus accident or something, and they don't happen often, but they happen. You know, I would get in my car and drive over to the accident, you know, and it's just what I do. I just need to see it. I need to see what's going on. I need to be there. I need to reassure the parents, reassure the kids. It's just how I operate, and, and so I'm going to do the same thing, same thing here.
Thank you. The citizens in our community demand value for their tax dollars and transparency and fiscal accountability. In this light, what has been your involvement with your district's budget planning and development?
It's okay.
And tell us about how you will ensure that the budget you propose to the school committee is as efficient as possible.
So let me take the first half of that, because I, I've certainly done it over and over again. So I, again, when I first started in 2014, and it wasn't the first year they had done it, but it was still pretty new. I published a line item budget. What that did is it showed the whole community exactly where the money was being spent, at what building, and at what level. And as the years went on, one of the things that I did is I, we showed them from one year to the next how the money was being spent, so they could see that if I said we were going to buy this particular item in a particular fiscal year, that it didn't just stay in the budget from year to year to year. So if we made a commitment and we moved some budget dollars into a certain line, I'm trying to think of an example off the top of my head, but let's say there was a blip year where we needed to buy textbooks and math or something like that, and so we knew that there was going to be a money move, twenty thousand dollars moved into the math line in the budget. Okay, we made that commitment. The twenty thousand was going to stay there for the, much to the chagrin of the math department had, wasn't going to stay there for the next seven years. We were going to say, "What's the next priority from year to year?" And so that showed people that it was an active document, that we weren't just sticking with numbers just because they were there, but people had to prove it every year. So when you talk about efficiency, that's just how you do it. So I won't say you start from ground zero, because that, a lot of people say, "Oh, we start from ground zero." It's great if you can, but there's a lot of commitments that you've already made. You already have a signed teacher contract, you have a signed paraprofessional contract, you have a signed union contract. There's a lot of ways that the budget is kind of built for you. But what I did do is I asked the principals to develop their expense budgets from the ground up. And so every year, they would work closely with me to make sure that they were looking And so every year, they would work closely with me to make sure that they were looking at every line every year. And that did a lot to introduce efficiency. It also did a lot to make sure that I was making sure that their priorities were number one in the budget. Because it's easy, you know, if you have five or $6,000 in a supply line, it's easy to just kind of say, well, that's just what it's going to be for the next 20 years. Well, show me how you're going to spend that $5,000. So one of the things that we did in the budget, and you can actually, it's on Hanover's website, you can look at it, is I made them articulate exactly how they were proposing to spend that $5,000 of their supply budget. And it's things you'd expect, you know, paper and supplies and so forth. But show me that and show the community that. That went a long way toward providing efficiency. And then blinding transparency. There's just no question about it, you know? And, and I see it, I mean, in your budget and in, in the budget that I wrote. We're going to talk about it early and we're going to talk about it often. I, I joke, you know, we just opened up FY22. FY23, come October, we're going to start developing the FY23 budget, if you haven't already. In many ways you have because you're working with federal dollars and we're trying to figure out how to use S or II, III funds. So we've already started projecting how FY23 is going to look. But we're going to start in October. The principals are going to give me, you know, their lists of what are they looking for? How does the budget fit? I typically, and I saw you did it, and it's pretty common of what I did in Hanover, and in November, beginning of December, I give you a preliminary budget. And I'll say, all right, this is what's on my mind, this is what's on the administrative team's mind. React to that. And you might say to me, great, you know, I think you're in the right direction. Hey, a couple of years ago, one of the school committee members in Hanover said to me, you know, I really need you to look at our reading teachers. I'm concerned that we don't have enough reading teachers. Great, so that, and again, that particular year, we couldn't add one, but I knew it was a priority. And so we worked together to kind of get us into that direction. So it gives the school committee an opportunity before town hall has kind of given us the number that we have to live with or before, you know, if they do that. If they don't, that's awesome. So it's okay. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. If they don't, which is always the best of all possible worlds, then it gives us an opportunity to really present to the community what we want to see for the education of our students. And that, you know, and that's how you do it. So you have an opportunity to react to me. And then come January, February, we're off to the races. And, and budget sub is dealing with all the details of the budget and making sure that they're reporting back to the school committee and whatever process we, we worked out. But that blinding transparency is what's going to make it so that when we're in town meeting, things go smoothly. Nobody at town meeting, let me put it this way. And my understanding is if I read everything right, you have a representative town meeting? Like, okay, all right, similar to Norwood, all right. So those people who are the representatives at town meeting, when I present the budget, it's not the first time any of them have ever heard that. They're going to sit there and go, all right, you've said this to us 10 times already. We get it, all right, fine, good. That's what I want to hear at town meeting. I don't want to hear at town meeting, this is the first I've heard of this. I haven't done my job, if, if that's what, if that's what happens. So, so yeah, my budget, I've done seven years of budgets in Hanover. We had situations where we've had good years and bad years. We had a report at the beginning of my tenure, just about a year before I took over. We brought the Abrams group in, there was a lot of issues with funding in Hanover. And it, they reported that Hanover was chronically about $5 million underfunded. We couldn't fix it in one year, nobody can. But we committed to it. And so over the last seven years, we've been able to build the budget up from, you know, 23, 24 million to 30 million. Smaller community, different numbers. The proportions are about the same, but just different numbers. And we've only been able to do that because of the transparency and the credibility. I work very closely with our finance committee, with our advisory committee, who, you know, is, is an arm of the select board. I meet with them on a regular basis, we keep them abreast of what we're doing. So that, not to try to pit one board against the other, but to keep everybody talking. Because the worst thing you want to happen is the advisory board doesn't know what the school committee's thinking or vice versa. And if we can keep everybody talking, we can't necessarily solve all the problems, but at least we'll know what we're, what we're dealing with and where the priorities are. I can talk about budget for two hours, so.
I know you could.
So, oh, come on, just.
Sorry, it was an obvious question.
No, it's okay.
Thank you.
How do you determine the success of your district? How would you define success over short term or long, for the long run?
Sure. I think success in the short term really has to do with, in a lot of ways, are students moving from grade level to grade level in a consistent manner? You always have a couple of retentions, but in general, are there, are there any major issues with moving from grade level to grade level? Is your high school graduation rate where you'd expect it to be? You know, are you, are the students making it through high school? Because a lot of times, it, it, there's many reasons why a student may drop out of high school or may not make it through high school. We just want to make sure we're not the reason. So, you know, is, is the program of studies all the way from kindergarten forward keeping students moving along? And the ways that you evaluate that, the, the more traditional ones would be the MCAS scores. A lot of people, I'm certainly going to look at your MCAS scores. I looked at all of them in all of your different schools and they're all ranging about 500, 502 on average, which means you're, you know, you're right where you need to be, but there's always opportunities for growth. And so how do we, we evaluate a whole district? We look at the sweep of it. What the MCAS is going to show you is how much you're adhering to the frameworks, whether they be English or math frameworks. That's really what the MCAS is testing. It's not testing an individual student's smarts. It's testing, are you adhering to the frameworks? And if you are adhering to the frameworks, then your MCAS scores are going to be higher. So when people say to me, and I won't diverge into this, but, you know, are you teaching to the test? No, we're teaching to the frameworks, we're teaching to the standards. As long as you teach to the standards, you don't have to worry about the test. The test will happen. When you fight the standards, then the test is also going to be a struggle. And it's getting people to switch out of that mindset. I'm not teaching to the test, I'm teaching the standards. Yes, we do have to teach some test-taking skills, that's always helpful. But that's not the goal. The goal is to teach to the standards. So that's one way that I'm going to make sure that district is, is being successful. Another way is just through your regular formative assessment. I don't know whether you use IREDDI or whether you use DIBELS or what to use for elementary kind of formative assessment along the way. It doesn't really matter. The whole idea is that you're doing something. So two or three times a year, you're testing students. You're testing in September, you're testing again in February, and you're testing again in June so that you can see exactly the kind of progress the students are making or aren't making. And the teachers can make those adjustments along the way. I'm going to be very, very, the whole big part of the, the new evaluation instrument for principals is just that, is how involved are they in instruction? How involved are they in curriculum development? How involved are they not only evaluating by, by observing teachers, but in those observations, are they making constructive comments about what they see? So, you know, if they see something in class and they can make a constructive comment from their own experience about formative assessment or how a teacher can look at their class, that's a big part of how we're going to evaluate principals and will ultimately go toward the success of the district. I'm also going to evaluate the success of the district based on a lot of the other intangibles that I saw in your triennial report. One of the things that attracted me to Stoughton is the commitment to diversity, the commitment to literacy, the commitment to English language learners, the commitment to assessment, the commitment to technology. All of those things are going to show me the success of a district because if you're committed to diversity, then you're going to see, you know, listen to the student voices, the students get it a lot more than we do. And I know at your high school, you already have students who have formed into a diversity group. That's critical. We listen to those students. We have a similar group at Hanover High School. And the students are a lot more comfortable with it. And so they're going to help us move forward and they're going to help us kind of figure out the best way to, to move toward diversity. So that's how I'm going to evaluate the success of the district. I think also, again, it sounds silly, but is everybody generally happy when you walk around? I know this sounds really kind of foolish. But when you, when you enter a building, right? You can gauge very quickly whether people are relatively content, whether there is an academic collaborative community, whether there is a community of learners among the students and the staff, or is everybody just really upset? And you can tell that pretty quickly. And, and that will tell you that, you know, you know, everybody has issues. Everybody has, has struggles that they're dealing with. But in general, are people adjusted and happy and want to be in school? Attendance rate is another one I'm going to look at very closely. Your attendance rates are very good. I went through your attendance rates. I loved your school improvement plans because you published all the DEAST data, the Department of Education data, right in your school improvement plans. I had spent some time looking it all up. And then I went to your school improvement plans and I'm like, I'm like, oh gee, you know, it's right here, thanks. So it was awesome because it really gave me a real quick snapshot of each one of the elementary schools. Again, not something everybody knows. So all those ways I would evaluate the success of the district.
Thank you.
What do you see as the most important issues facing public schools and why?
I'm trying to pick one. We have to, we have to find a way to accept, and, and this comes from my secondary background and, and it just is. I did too many years in, in high school. We have to find a way to accept students who are still searching for themselves and trying to find themselves, right? So when we're adults, we're generally pretty settled. We have our lives and most adults are pretty settled in their lives. Kids are still exploring, they're still figuring things out. And from kindergarten and certainly in seventh grade and in high school, are figuring things out. And so, you know, when we talk about LGBTQ plus issues and we talk about, you know, students, and I'm certainly firmly an ally of those students, and a lot of people are like, well, I struggle with that because I, I don't, I'm, I'm, my, my, my son is only nine or 10 years old, he's not ready to talk about LGBTQ issues. He's not ready to know about that. But he may not be struggling with it, or she may not be struggling with it, but one of their classmates might be. And so when you bring it down to the student level and compassion for the student, it takes a lot of the politics out of it because you're looking at, whether it's LGBTQ issues or sexual orientation issues or students with drug addictions, whatever the issue is that's making that student struggle. And those are all issues facing public schools. Or issues of race, gender equality, all of those things. Bring it down to the individual student who is struggling to find out where they, where they fit in society. And, and this is something that, that I've come to. I'm evolving, just like everybody, and trying to figure this situation out. You know, recently I was on the Cape with, with the superintendents. We have our annual, our annual workshop down on the Cape. And one of the ways, one of the presenters said it, really, really struck with me. You know, she said, for 98% of us, she said, you know, you're born, the doctor says, it's a girl, it's a boy, and everybody's fine. The student moves on with that, the family's fine with that, the doctor's fine with that, the student's fine with that. For 2% of our students, they're not quite sure. And that doesn't emerge until they're older and they can articulate that, that, that their gender is a little bit more fluid or they're not quite sure. And what we're seeing in society is even in society where people are, are saying, well, no, okay, I get it. You might be gay, you might be, you know, dealing with sexual orientation, or you might be transgender. And they're like, okay, so that's what you are, now let's move forward. And it's like, okay, but the student's only 14. The questioning part is the piece that I think public schools are struggling with, right? It would be easier in some ways if it was cleaner, even with the different sexual orientation and, and different gender equity issues. But it's not. And so what are we struggling with today? Of course, I had to pick the most controversial thing. But what we're struggling with today is that there are students who are questioning. And they don't know. So how do we support them and how do we figure, figure that out? Certainly, we have to support the students who already know and have already figured out their gender, their orientation or whether or not they're dealing with issues of sexual identity. But there's a lot of students who are questioning. And if you really believe, as I do, that these things emerge when you're a pre-teen in adolescence and in high school, our compassion for those students is what's going to get us through it. And it's what allows us to move beyond the political polarization that we're seeing in the country right now. And I'll add one more thing to that. When you say, what are the issues facing public schools today? Because I really, I've, I've really framed my mind around this a little bit. I've been wondering over the last six to eight months, you know, why are individual communities, and this is not nothing to do with Stoughton specifically, but why are individual communities having real serious, in many ways, nervous breakdowns about race, about equity, about gender? Because I think individual communities are trying to take on the sins of the world. You know, you see this in communities where it's like, okay, it's been very hard. And there are very, very serious issues of, of race and gender inequality that we all have to grapple with. But a community such as Stoughton isn't going to take on the sins of the world. You don't have to atone for 500 years of history. Our responsibility here is to figure out, how is it happening here in Stoughton? What is happening here in Stoughton? And when I talk about listening, that's one of the things I'm going to be listening for. What can we do here in Stoughton to make things more comfortable for students who are struggling with gender equity issues? Or for students who are LGBTQ plus? Or students who are trying to figure out their place in the world, no matter what that is? All right, that's way too philosophical for this. But the idea is, that's how I'm going to be coming at it. And then when you say, you know, what are we facing? That's what we're facing. How do we compartmentalize a national struggle into Stoughton? And how do we make it so that we can still work in this environment and help us all learn how to move forward in a, in a more enlightened and open-minded way? We'll never finish the questions if I keep going. But I, it just, it came to me when I was at the conference because I deliberately went to a couple of the LGBTQ workshops because I, I needed to wrap my own mind around it. And, and it, once you put it on the kid, it was a story of, you know, a kindergarten are struggling with sexual identity and other parents saying, look, I'm not ready for my five-year-old to talk about sexual identity, I'm just not. Okay, I get it. But this five-year-old is, and how are we going to, how are we going to help him out? And, and if we stay there, we can talk about it. If we try to take on the sins of the world, we're never going to get there.
Okay. Tell us about your experiences working with children and families who don't look like you or speak the language you do or do not have the same economic advantages that you do. And how have these experiences shaped your view of public education and its mission?
Thank you for asking. I, I've worked in a wide variety of communities. I don't put it on my resume anymore. But I, you know, I took Spanish through high school. I spent a summer in the Dominican Republic. There was a time about 25 years ago when I could handle myself in Spanish. 13 years in Hanover, I haven't used it much, but I, I, I have an understanding of, of Spanish. When I started looking at Stoughton, and, and you'll laugh, but I downloaded the Portuguese app to try to get some sense of the differences between Portuguese and Spanish and try to understand a little bit more about the language. I love seeing the translation documents on your website, already translated for families, so they don't have to beg for them, they don't have to look for them. Those are the kinds of things that I would expect to see. And then if I didn't see it, I'd, I'd want to make sure it was put into place. I have tried, I guess, and this is more goes back to my guidance counselor days, but you work with families who are in a whole variety of situations. Economic, and, and let's stick with economic for now, whether it comes to being able to pay for college, being able to, 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 to afford a car. I mean, you know, we, we deal with, with many, many students and, you know, and it's kind of a rite of passage for some of them to have a car when they're a senior year of high school. And, and other kids just, it's not, it's not even on the radar screen. It's just not going to happen. And I had one experience, and, and Hanover is a relatively wealthy community. And it was one student in my office, he was a senior and he was crying. Senior boys don't typically cry, just FYI. But this one was. And, and he, I said, what's, what's wrong? He's like, I've been up all night plowing. And he was, you know, snow plowing, it was the middle of winter. I'm like, that's cool. I said, you must be making a couple bucks. And he said, yeah, he said, but I, I didn't get any homework done, didn't get anything done, I'm not prepared for the day. But he said, I have to, I have to support my family. And he said, and he's not the sole supporter of his family, but he certainly, what he made didn't, didn't go to his, you know, movie money. It went to feeding the family. And in a community such as Hanover, when he's living there and he's saying, you know, a lot of my friends, you know, they'll make $100 on the weekend and they'll go out to the movies or they'll go out to a club or they'll do what they do. He said, that money goes toward my mom, I have to give it to her so she can, and they don't understand that. And, and he was telling you the story and helping him under, you know, and I, of course, was just trying to really help him, you know, buck him up a little bit and say, look, you know, you're doing what you have to do, you know, and you, this, all the work ethic you're learning and everything else is really going to help you later on. But he was really struggling with how to fit in, in that situation where so many of his friends didn't have to worry about that. Personal experience, when you talk about being disenfranchised and, and how to, to work with that. A lot of ti, when my, my youngest, my, when my oldest son was two, he wasn't talking. This is 22 years ago. And in Marshfield, I had a lot of connections with early intervention. I had a lot of connections with, you know, social services, a lot of connections with mass health, a lot of connections with all the kinds of connections you would expect, but any at-risk family too. And, and I was talking to one of the other guidance counselors and I said, you know, what do I do? He's our oldest, you know, by the youngest, you kind of figure it out. But an oldest, you know, he wasn't talking and then his sister came along and at a year, she was talking in full sentences. And so we're like, all right, there's something wrong. And I was telling the, you know, the guy, the other guidance counselor, what do I do? Where do I go? How do I deal with this? And I said, I, should I call social services? Should I call, you know, anywhere? Should I call EI? What should I do? She looked at me dead in the eye and she said, Tom, call your pediatrician. The pediatrician will tell you where to go and what to do and make those referrals for you. And it slammed into me in that moment what that meant. Because not everybody has that option, right? I had good health insurance, I could call a pediatrician, not a problem. And we did, and, and he's fine. Not fine, but we worked on his intervention and, and he, he, he did okay. But that experience has struck with me for the last 22 years. Because what it did is it showed me the divide very, very clearly of what's available that not everybody has access to. And so how do we change that? How do we fix that, right? So, you know, I've always tried to make sure people have access to resources so that they can, they can do that. I've worked in economically disadvantaged communities, you know, Hanover isn't one. But certainly there were pockets of Norwood and in Amityville where we've had to work with that. When I was at Silesian High School in New Rochelle, even though the school is in New Rochelle, the students are all from the Bronx. And so I had experiences at that time of, you know, visiting families in Co-op City and visiting students in, in, in the Bronx. And so I was able to begin to understand some of what, what they're facing. And I think I can bring that experience with me. I don't know, I feel like I'm talking around the question. But it, to me, it really is an equity issue, right? the question. But it, to me, it really is an equity issue, right? The family that's doing fine, that can support their kids, can, you know, use the car as an example, afford to give their senior a car, they certainly need some support. But a family that can't needs more support in order to make the equity happen, right? And so what, what do we do as a public school? We fill in those gaps. And we can make sure that that happens for families. So I, I've had a variety of experiences. And even in Hanover, you know, people, it's a wealthy community, no doubt. But there are certainly pockets of poverty. Our diversity is not about race, but there's certainly a diversity of, of economics in Hanover. And helping people understand that, that we have a very active food pantry in Hanover. You wouldn't think necessarily, but we have a very active food pantry. And they're very careful about how they distribute that food. They want to make sure families get it. And I remember one of the people who runs the food pantry said to me once, you'd be surprised if I told you some of the addresses of the families that are coming to us. Life happens. Life happens to families, and we have to be prepared for that. Even, even a family that on the outside might look perfectly put together, on the inside, isn't. And we can be, we can be ready for that. I saw that a lot, particularly in Hanover. Families that you'd look on the outside and say, you know, what's the problem? And then you go, and you, you meet them, and you know about the situation. And I'd know more as principal than other people. And I'd have to say, look, you know, cut them some slack, all right? Just, I can't tell you why. Just cut them some slack. And, and, and people kind of get that. Let's talk about department heads.
Dr. Robb, how much independence would you provide your, to your department heads and principals in selecting their staffs? And what would be the role of the superintendent in assessing the effectiveness of the administration?
Sure. So quite a bit. So I believe in autonomy. The principal knows the building best. The principals know the needs of the building best. When I was a vice principal at Norwood High School, I supervised the department heads. We had a traditional department head structure. And I would always say to them, look, first round interviews for teachers, that's yours. I don't need to get involved with that. They would bring in the teachers. They know their department. They would bring in other teachers. And they would pick a finalist, right, to come to me as the vice principal. And then I would bring that person to the principal. But, but primarily, it came to me to, to work with the finalist teacher and do the final hire. And so they appreciated that autonomy. And when, in, in my role right now as assistant superintendent, one of the reasons why I made a switch from being the business manager to assistant superintendent is because I wanted to take on more responsibility for personnel issues. So in Hanover right now, I'm kind of the, the last stop for hiring. So the superintendent certainly approves everything that I do. But he and I have a very close relationship. And so he's given me a lot of authority to set salaries and, and do a lot of the hiring that is typically reserved to superintendents in other districts. With that responsibility also comes from, I, I feel that very powerfully. And so similarly, the principals do the hiring at their level. They will send somebody to me. But what I have said to them is, candidates need to be recommended by you, but I'm the one that's going to put them on the payroll. So it's kind of like a final veto kind of situation. So nine times out of 10, probably 99 times out of 100, I don't have an issue with somebody who comes across my desk that a principal will recommend. You know, I might have a couple of questions. Did you, you know, did you make sure, and I want to make sure they've done their background checks. I want to make sure they've called references. I want to make sure all of those pieces of, of a hiring process happen. And maybe I'll ask a couple of questions, like, you know, I, you know, you meet somebody once, you don't always know everything. And so you say, is this going to fit into the department? Okay, are they going to fit in with the other teachers? And if they say yes, I'm good. I mean, we give it a shot. Very rarely am I going to reject somebody. Like I said, one in 100 is probably generous. It's probably more like one in 500. Where I'm actually going to take a finalist candidate that a principal brought to me and say, no, you have to find somebody else. But I have, and I would, if I really felt that that person wasn't going to fit in. In terms of taking that to the next level, then to the principals, and, and, and how do we make sure the principals are doing that? It's being very articulate about the goals and missions of the district. So everybody you hire has to have some connection to the goals and missions of the district. So the principal should know their school improvement plan, should know the triangle plan, should know the professional development plan. Is who they're hiring going to fit with that mission? And if they're doing that, then they're, they're doing okay. And that's how I can evaluate it, right? So I can see that if they're hiring people that fit with our mission, those people are going to be successful. The other way I can evaluate is that, do they stay? Right? Something simple, right? So we always have situation where, you know, people don't work out. But in most of the time, they should. You know, are people staying for three years? Do they feel mentored over the three years that they're teaching here? Do you have a situation where people are being hired, and then two or three years down the road, they're moving to another district where they can make more money, or they feel like they have more autonomy or more responsibility? We don't want that, right? If we hire somebody and we invest in their training, we want to keep them. And so if that's not happening, then that's a way that I'm going to evaluate kind of how the hiring is going. If we're in a position where we're hiring a lot of first-year teachers, and we were, back when I started in Norwood in 2003, we were hiring 15 or 16 people a year. Norwood High is a little bigger than Stoughton High, maybe 11, 1200 students. And we were hiring 12, 15 people a year. Inevitably, one or two people wouldn't work out. Low, now, we're not hiring that many people with, with, not only with COVID, but just because of the fact that most people aren't retiring. Hanover had no retirements this year. First time in my entire career, we had no retirements. We turned over the entire staff. Awesome. But, you know, there's not a whole lot of opportunity for new people then to, to kind of come in. So all of those ways, I'm going to be evaluating, the effectiveness of the administration. Are they hiring people? And are the people that they're hiring staying? And again, I know it sounds a little far-fetched. But when I walk into the building, and what's the effectiveness of the administration? Is the principal on his or her feet? You know, when I walk in at lunchtime, the principal better be in the cafeteria, or walking around the classrooms, or, you know, they better not be sitting in their offices. So those are the kinds of things that I'm going to quickly evaluate. You know, when there's a problem, is it the, you know, the principal that's on their feet? Is it the assistant principal that's on their feet? Are they out and about? Do the parents know who they are? Are they communicating effectively with the community? I'm going to certainly be writing to the community on a regular basis. You'll get used to me communicating. I, I just met your media relations guy. You, we're going to be fast friends, trust me. I'm a good writer, but he's going to turn it into a consistent message. And so it'll look the same, it'll feel the same. People will get to know my voice. You'll, you'll get to hear me start everything with Dear Stoughton Families. You'll get, you'll get used to that. The principals are going to do the same thing at their own level. And so that consistency means that the parents are going to know exactly what's going on. I tend to write more frequently. So some people will put like 10 things in an email and send it once a week. I typically don't do that. I typically write what I need to write when you need to know it. And I, I had it down with the parents at Hanover High. I said, look, you know, if, if you need to know it, you're going to get it from me in an email. I'm going to let you know what's going on. You're going to know about the dance. You're going to know about the situation, whatever's going on. And I'm going to tell you what's going on in the school, so that you're not getting that information from your own student. You're going to hear it from me. And then you can verify it with your kid. But you're going to hear it from me first.
Thank you.
Multicultural experiences are more than just race, language, or place of origin. What experiences do you have that relate to multicultural experiences, especially when some cultures have different values from your own? How do these experiences affect the way you work?
Thank you. I, I've been trying to create them more and more. Hanover's not a very diverse community. But in, in Norwood, and certainly in Marshfield, language for me is a, is a big part of how I try to understand somebody. And again, I'm not fluent in Spanish, but I have a good understanding of it. I'm, and if, and, and I know that here, there's also a pretty large Portuguese population. And so for me, understanding somebody's language is a good way to understand where they're coming from. And understand their poetry, understand how they work. So to me, I spent some time in the Dominican Republic. I spent a summer in the Dominican Republic, a long time ago, back in 1993. But it, it really showed me a level of diversity in a different way. The Dominican Republic is, 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 is a wonderful country. And when you go there, and you see people of every color, right? Every single color in the Dominican Republic. But they perceive themselves as Hispanic. And you understand that, or Latinx would be the term we'd use today. And they, they, they perceive themselves as all Latinos. They all speak Spanish. They're all fluent in Spanish. And the different colors are just different colors. There's no necessarily race attached to it. And so that opened my eyes huge, back when I was a, you know, 25-year-old. And I was able to see that racial background, racial identity, isn't necessarily all about color. It's about the culture. And it's about what, what is that culture that those people are, are growing up in? And how does that impact how they live? There's a huge respect for elders in that culture, a huge, and, and, and here, the respect is, people with money tend to, tend to have more respect here. And people with, without money tend to have less respect here. In the Dominican Republic, it had nothing to do with money. It had to do with age. If you were 70 years old, and you're a grandma, or you're a donia, and you were there, you had respect. Didn't matter whether you had any money or not. That opened my eyes. And it opened my eyes to Latinx culture in a way that I didn't understand before. And it lets me relate to it differently now, so that I have a much better sense of it. I have tried to do my best to, I'm not going to say rise above my background. It's the wrong term. But I think you try, but I'm trying to get, get beyond my own background. I am what I am. I grew up how I grew up. But I look for opportunities to provide a multicultural experience for myself. And I know it sounds like it was 100 years ago, but it was in 10th grade. We had a chance to go to Spain. I went. I got there. You know, when I was in college, we had a chance to go to Italy. I went to Italy to see what it was about. Recently, my daughter was a junior in high school, well, six years ago. We sent her to Eastern Europe on a trip that she went to with a school, you know, typical school trip. But we did that because we wanted her to see different cultures, and how different cultures handle things. So I'm looking for those experiences. Every time I have interacted in a more multicultural environment, I've always come out the richer for it. And I've always come out being able to understand cultures better, understand where people are coming from better. And at the end of the day, honestly, have more empathy for what anybody's dealing with, much less somebody in that situation.
Yep, sorry. How would you hold educators at all levels accountable for delivering effective instructions?
Plan your work and work your plan. So they're going to get sick of me saying that, so I better start saying it now, right? So plan your work and work your plan. So I expect that anybody we hire to teach knows how to develop a lesson plan, knows how to execute a lesson plan. And if they're learning how to do that, you know, their principals can help them through that. And we can all help them through that and become excellent educators. The way we hold them accountable is by keeping the classroom doors open. We know what's going on in the classrooms. It should be pretty common for administrators to walk through classrooms. Like I told you, it was pretty normal for that fourth-grade teacher to know that I was going to be coming in there, or any, anybody. The principal should have the freedom to walk around the building. A, a big part of the new evaluation instrument actually demands that principals do one unannounced visit every day. That's a pretty high bar. That's the proficient bar. That's not even the exemplary bar. That's the proficient bar. I almost fell out of my chair. So, you know, but, you know, one of the things I did, when I was principal of the high school in Hanover, particularly having been a guidance counselor, and there was always some suspicion of, you know, can he handle a classroom? What I used to do very often was make sure I was observing the instructional classrooms, but also in there in a non-observational capacity. So, you know, I wouldn't bring my clipboard. I wouldn't bring my iPad or whatever. And just say to a teacher, look, I just want to watch. Because for me, I know good instruction when I see it, and I can celebrate it. I've taken all of the courses and, and, you know, and so forth, to make sure that I can evaluate teachers. And by my presence in the room, they know that they have to step up the bar if there's an issue. What I've seen is, most teachers work very, very hard at their lesson plans. They work very, very hard at what they're putting together for students. And they want the students to learn. And so they're going to do everything they can in that time, whether it's formative assessment, all the different kinds of formative assessments that they're going to be doing, as well as the presentational lesson, to make sure that the students actually learn. The material wasn't just presented, but it was actually learned. And they'll do whatever they have to do to make sure that that happens. So to hold all educators accountable, it's being present in the room. They know that I'm there. It's also providing the support. They need the professional development. If, you know, right now, the, the new ELA standards, I think it was 2017 that they were promulgated. We had a bit of a hiccup with the COVID. A lot of people started, just started unpack those in 2018, 19. We need to get back to that. Well, if you give teachers the professional development to actually unpack the standards, whether they be the new math standards, or the ELA standards, or the social studies standards, it's a lot easier to hold them accountable for adherence to the standards if you've given them the PD to make them do it, right? So it, it's always a little bit fishy if you say, well, you have to do this, but I'm not going to give you the time to, to, to do the professional development. So that's part of that evaluation. If I give them the professional development to unpack the standards and develop lesson plans based on the standards, then I can hold them accountable to a whole nother level. But all those, all those ways are ways that, that I would hold them accountable. The biggest one is the presence. The principals need to be on their feet. The assistant principals need to be on their feet, in the classrooms, in the hallways. So they know what's going on. Not only so they can celebrate it, but that they, they know. I mean, you know, I learned a lot when I went into the forensics class, and I saw them, you know, doing all the different work. And they would, they'd be out in the hallway, and they'd throw dirt all the way down the hallway. And I had to hold my breath and say, okay, you promised to clean it up afterwards. Yeah, I promise. So, you know, but they would do what they had to do, right? And, you know, or they're, we had this brand-new Hanover high school, and big, big panes of glass, right? Because everything has to be visible and present, you know? And teachers on there with her, I thought it was a Sharpie. It wasn't. You know, writing on the glass, you know, brand-new school. You know, talk about having to hold on, right? So, but I kept my mouth shut. And then, you know, but it was innovative. And it was a way to the kids, oh, that's kind of cool. You know, we can do our fractions up on the, on the glass. Of course, she erased it afterwards. But those kinds of things are ways that people know that they're comfortable, and that they can do things, and they can be innovative, and they can be creative.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If you could get rid of high stakes, high-stakes testing for graduation requirements, would you? Why or why not?
I would if we could guarantee that everybody was teaching to the standards, and, and that we could guarantee that from school to school, Algebra II meant the same thing. So let me tell a story. So I came, moved up here when my son was born in 1997. And New York, as you may know, has Regents exams. They've had their version of MCAS. They've had, I was in high school, I took Regents. They've had them forever, since the 1940s. It's institutional. They're not going anywhere. When I moved up here in 1997, MCAS didn't exist yet. They had just done a year of what was called MEPS back then. In, in 1996, it was sort of a trial run. But in 1997, there was no standardized testing. And so when I interviewed as a guidance counselor, they were all telling me how wonderful it was in Massachusetts, because there was no standardized testing. And so you could do what you wanted to do. And I thought, that was awesome. And then in 1998, what did we do? We did the MCAS, right? That was the first year of the MCAS. So I quickly got over it. And what I, although, what I learned was, kids were graduating high school at that time with general math I and general math II, which is little beyond fifth, sixth grade math, right? It's addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division. And there were kids graduating high school at the time. And it wasn't just the high school I was at. It was pretty much everywhere. Where a kid in a standard, standard level could graduate from high school with a very bare minimum. What the MCAS did is it raised the bar of proficiency for everybody. And so now we saw, over the last 23 years, we've seen kids graduating from high school, the, not everybody's getting out with Algebra II, but probably 85% of them, 90% of them. And those that aren't are at least taking an integrated Algebra II. You know, I saw in your program of studies, you were revamping your integrated math. So, you know, fine. But at least it's integrated Algebra II. It's not general math. That's one example. But the bar was raised all the way around. The bar was raised to writing a five-paragraph essay, right? We laugh about it now. But in 1998, it was relatively new. And we said, okay, all the kids are going to come out of Massachusetts high schools with, with a five-paragraph essay. And they do. They do. When my son interviewed at Rensselaer, the, the department head in electrical engineering said to him, I can tell whether you're from Massachusetts in three seconds. All I have to do is ask you to write me something. You're going to write five paragraphs, because you're from Massachusetts. So everybody did. That was just, and he, he was laughing about it. But he said to my son David, he said, you know, paragraphs can have six paragraphs. Or essays can have six paragraphs. And he's like, no, they can't. And, you know, it's like, yeah, they actually can. So, you know, so would I get rid of them? I think we, eventually, I think we have a way to go. Because it does hold all of our feet to the fire to some degree. I think standardized testing in general holds all of our feet to the fire. It allows for a level of accountability. However, I do think, in many ways, we're being crushed by them. And so there's a balance, right? So how do we make sure that we keep the standards high, within a context of, you know, let's say we, we didn't have them? How do you keep the standards high? It takes an awful lot of work to do that. And we'd have to make sure we're constantly adhering to the, to the curriculum frameworks, that we're constantly challenging our students and not falling back. The other thing that I think standardized tests do is, they help us with our underrepresented groups. So if we look at the underrepresented groups, whether it's special education, whether it's high-need students, whether it's, you know, BIPOC students, whoever you want to look at, your underrepresented group, if you look at their standardized tests in, in the context of their group, and you look at the questions that they're getting right and wrong, it's helpful. The other way standardized tests are helpful is also for making sure that you're actually hitting all of the, the curriculum. Because it's, sometimes it's easy to, to not do everything that's in the curriculum if something comes up. And one of the things I always used to And one of the things I always used to say when we're looking at standardized test results is look at the, the top 10% of your kids. Take the top 10, the brightest kids you have and find out the questions that they got wrong. If, if, if one of those kids got a question wrong on a standardized test, more than likely they weren't taught it. It was just, it's a hole, it's a gap in your curriculum. And it's the quickest way to find gaps in your curriculum. So to the extent that that's helpful and making sure that you're doing it. The other thing that standardized tests help us with is pacing. So one of the things that I would also do is look at the questions that 70, 70% of the kids got wrong, or 60 or 70% of the kids got wrong. In some ways, it's going to tell you where, you know, that they weren't, maybe it wasn't taught or it wasn't taught to the extent that it needed to be. It could also just be that it was in the wrong place. When I was in my first year in Hanover, we, we were doing very poorly on cell biology and the biology MCAS. And nobody could really understand why. The teachers are like, I, they teach it, they showed it to me, you know, and said, we teach it, trust me. And I could see that they taught it. The problem is they taught it in September and the test was in June. So what we had to do, simple fix, we just introduced a reminder, a reminder in May of cell biology. And then suddenly the cell biology just goes went up. Without that test, we wouldn't necessarily have caught that. So again, not, not the be all and end all, not to get way into the future, but I think what is ultimately going to happen in terms of standardized testing, and we saw it beginning to evolve just before COVID and then COVID just kind of slammed the door on it, but is when we have kids who are going to be taught in a more innovative way with maker spaces and innovative creative problem solvers, right? This is what we want them to do. We want them to work in small groups and, and solve problems and work with maker spaces and create something out of nothing. When we challenge kids to do that and then we put a traditional test in front of them, that's not fair, right? So we've given them an innovative education and then we've said, now here to take this traditional test. What's starting to happen with the MCAS, and we're seeing glimmers of it, is it's going to, it's going to catch up a little bit, or whatever 10 years from now standardized testing looks like. I don't know that it's necessarily going to look exactly the way it looks now. But what it needs to do is help hold us all accountable. And I think if it does that, it'll work. I know you wanted a yes or no, I couldn't do it. Sorry.
Thank you. Stoughton is a diverse community with many different cultures. What can you as superintendent do to help recruit the best and a more diverse faculty and staff to work here?
Thank you so much for asking. I appreciate that. You're already doing it. So what I heard the middle school principal talking about being part of the Mass Partnership for Diversity, I know I'm getting that title wrong, but there's a, it's a group that he's part of that's helping recruit minority staff and helping recruit BIPOC staff. They're identifying staff that are available and can be, you know, you can interview and take a look at, that's a great first step. Your biggest piece of success is going to be right here in Stoughton. It's going to be taking the students that you have in class right now who are interested in being teachers or educators or paraprofessionals and mentoring them up. So that starts in 11th grade. When somebody's interested in teaching, bring them to one of the elementary schools, whether it's the elementary school they went to themselves or another one, and bring them with first graders and second graders and show them what's it like, you know, to be in the classroom. In some cases, if going to college right away isn't necessarily an option, but you know that they're interested in being a teacher, sometimes it's like, well, we have this opportunity to be a paraprofessional or to be a tutor or to have a chance to be in the school and see what it's like and see how you do. Sometimes it's, it's just a direct challenge. I mean, we've had situations where somebody's been a paraprofessional and I know that they, you know, they can be a teacher and you say, look, you know, why aren't you going to school? Why aren't you at Bridgewater getting your degree in education? And they'll tell you. And then you're like, okay, well, what, what can I do to help? One of the things that is very, very tough for an undergraduate is when that professor, when they're a junior says, you need to do 70 hours of observation, right? In, in a classroom. And they don't really care where, but you need to do 70 hours. It's not the formal student teaching. That's hard for a 19, 20 year old to go find a high school somewhere or an elementary school where they can go do 70 hours and watch somebody else teach. Well, and I can only imagine it's even that much more difficult for a BIPOC student to be able to walk into a room and say, hey, you know, to the principal, I want to be able to observe. Let's open those doors up. I, for Hanover high kids, I always used to tell them, if, when the professor tells you that, you just tell them, we're here, you know? Come on in, we'll get you in to do the observation. I encourage them to come back and student teach at Hanover High School when I could because I want them to come back and I want their friends to see that just three, four years later, they're ready to be a teacher. And many times it's younger siblings in the school and their older sibling is their student teaching. And that gets everybody kind of excited about the fact that in the community you're generating teachers. I also think you have to go beyond the traditional ways that we recruit. So we recruit through school spring typically. We recruit, you know, we used to recruit in the paper, not so much anymore. But it's typically school spring, it's typically word of mouth. We have to go beyond that. And whether it's the Mass Partnership that I talked about earlier, or it's just getting onto college campuses. Before COVID, Bridgewater, and I'm sure they'll go back to it, Bridgewater used to do a job fair. And it didn't really matter, you know, sometimes I'd have open positions and so we'd be actively recruiting. Sometimes we'd go just to collect some resumes and help the students practice interviewing. So I'd sit at a table like this and the student would come up to me with their resume, you know, all shiny and happy. And the idea was practice interviewing. This is non threatening, right? At least I thought it was. So, you know, give them that practice so that when they're actually interviewing, they can be more successful at it. But we have to go out and actively find them. Like I said, in New York, I was accustomed to a more diverse staff and I was unpleasantly surprised when I, when I saw that up here. And we just, we just need to do that. But your, your biggest pool is right here in the classrooms in Stoughton. And how can we encourage those students? Whether we give them mentorships in elementary school, whether we encourage them to go to school, hey, did you think about, you know, going to Bridgewater and study to be a teacher? If you do, I'll get you back in the high school doing your student teaching. Don't worry about that. I'll help you with all of that. Those are the ways that I think we can do it. And again, I don't have a huge diverse population in Hanover, but we have had situations, it's more economic diversity, where we've said to students, look, come back in, I'll get you through the door for the student teaching, I'll get you what you want in student teaching, anything. And then they're in there. Or it's a, it's, sometimes it's just an invitation, you know? I know somebody's going out for maternity leave, it's only going to be three, you know, three months, but come in, cover that long-term sub. You've just got brand new certification, I don't have a job for you right now, but it's going to be a three month long-term sub. And that's much better looking on your resume than subbing for three months, you know, regular subbing for three months. So it's that invitation and to say, hey, you know, come on in, you can do this. And I, and I would absolutely do that. And I would do any opportunity that I could to recruit more, more underrepresented staff. Absolutely, no question. We just, the kids deserve it, our own students deserve it.
Dr. Robb, are you satisfied with your current district's performance? Why or why not? Looking back, is there something you should replicate or might have done differently? Please explain.
This is tough because Hanover's only 10 miles away and there's a lot of people who live in Stoughton who work in Hanover, so I have to be real careful. So I'll try to go back far enough in history that it won't offend anybody. No, I don't think we're ever at a point where we're happy. I think there's always room for improvement. And like I said, we look at underrepresented groups, we look at any opportunity where we can do better. You know, if, if we're all kind of doing around that proficient area, 500, 510, we can always do better. The goal was to bring everybody into proficiency and we're still working on that goal. We have a lot of students who are still in, in the, you know, what used to be needs improvement. But the idea is that we need to bring those kids into proficiency. And so one of the things that, that we did was look at the edges of proficiency and needs improvement. And we would look at the students who are right on the edge of making it to that next level and look at their scores and see what we could do to, to help them out. One of the other things that we did back at the high school, and this was back 2012, 2013, is we really put into place some learning communities. And it's, it's an active, active thing to, to teach us from diverse backgrounds because remember, high schools tend to be very in their cells. They tend, English department, social department, math department. So we tried to make a diverse learning community and bring the teachers together to talk about issues of the day in the school, but also, you know, what, what the local educational trends are. We also looked at PSAT scores and SAT scores because that was another, and it's in my personal statement, which I know you have, but we spent quite some time looking at PSAT scores. And through that process, we saw that critical reading was an issue that our students were struggling with. And so we were able to introduce interventions the following year that made critical reading an issue in every classroom, not just English. But if you're reading in chemistry, if you're reading in math, if you're reading in social studies, certainly, critical reading became kind of a school-wide goal. And during the time that we did it, we saw an uptick in the critical reading scores in the PSATs, which ultimately led to better SAT scores. So more than increasing our PSAT scores, it brought the whole level of academic discourse up in the school. Kids were talking about critical reading. It was awesome, right? So you could actually sit down with the kids and say, you know, what makes this a fiction, nonfiction, argumentative persuasive? You know, what, what was the piece of that critical reading? We were having those kinds of conversations. I think that is what is going to improve everybody's performance. Because when we start having those academic, that academic discourse, everybody's talking about it. And, and, and it allows everybody an opportunity to up the game to, to a large extent. What I would have done differently is made sure that it continued to happen. And I think it's one of those things when you do PLCs, when you do professional learning communities and those kinds of things, it takes an awful lot of work to maintain those to make sure everybody shows up at every one, every week, and other things get in the way. And so I'm very sensitive to when you do something new or you do something innovative, you have to make it sustainable. And I've had situations in my career where I have been able to make it sustainable and other situations where, where I regret that it wasn't as sustainable as it could be.
Thank you.
What have you done to prepare yourself for the superintendency? And what are the strengths that you bring to the position? What would be your personal professional development plan where you become, if you become our superintendent?
Sure, thank you. I've, my entire, entire career has prepared me for this. I mean, I don't want to sound grandiose, but I, I've had this as a career goal for quite some time. I have 18 years in administration. I worked my way up through the ranks pretty deliberately. You know, I, I was an assistant principal for five years, I was a principal for six years, I've been in the central office now for seven years. And I have tried to fill in any gaps in my professional life. So for example, my whole career is primarily secondary. So I didn't really, when I became into central office, I kind of left the high school alone. They were just as grateful. And I focused my efforts on where I needed to fill in my own gaps, primarily preschool. I did a lot of work, have done a lot of work over the last six years, working with the preschool. I meet with them three or four times a year with the staff, with the principal. And not only from a budgetary concern, but preschool is one of those things that changes. You have to take them when they turn three, no matter when they turn three. And so it's one of those budget things that's always a budget back and forth with preschool. So I helped them, you know, not only control the budget situation and, and help them understand that flexibility and help the school committee understand the flexibility of a preschool budget. But I also got involved in the academics of it and helping them buy materials, adaptive materials, you know, whatever the things that they needed to make the preschool successful. One of the other things I did to prepare for this role was dive into the center elementary school project. So, you know, as the business manager, when we were building the center elementary school, you know, I could have stayed in my lane and just kind of, you know, made sure we signed the bills and did the POs and all that. But I didn't do that. I, I got involved in making sure we were buying the furniture. We bought very innovative furniture. We bought innovative schools. I made, I was involved in choosing the colors for the school, but I was also involved in putting together the educational plan. So when we did the educational visioning for the school, I was at all of those meetings as well. And so any opportunity I have had to be able to fill in those gaps, you know, I worked, worked closely at the middle school. Our Title I in Hanover is at our middle school. It's a, it's a smaller program, but it's confined to our middle school. I'm the one that writes the Title I grant. And primarily, not because I have a particular affinity for writing grants, but it's more that I wanted to be involved in the educational evaluation that goes along with writing any of those grants. So I got involved with, with, you know, how are the students doing? What grade levels are they in? How are they assigned? Working with the reading teachers to make sure that, that students were, were assigned. This was a couple of years ago. So I've tried to fill holes in my own professional career, knowing that most of my life has been secondary. Professional development plan, it's really to keep on that same trajectory. Like I said, I'm going to hit the ground listening. I'm going to start, I'm going to be, I know it sounds grandiose, but I'm going to be everywhere. People will see me, they'll see me in the hallways, they'll see me at town hall, they'll see me on the fields at cultural events. I look forward to getting to know the community, to really diving into the community. You know, just recently I earned my MC, or I applied for my MCPPO, the Massachusetts Certified Public Purchasing Official. I finished all the courses, I have all the experience that they want. I gave them the $75, hopefully they'll give me back the certificate. But, you know, again, for me, that was a credibility thing. I've been the procurement person in Hanover for seven years. But having that certification allows for a level of credibility. So I've always looked for those opportunities. You know, I, I didn't stop. I got my doctorate in 2007. It was awesome. Took a year off after that, recovered and then really kind of went back to school as much as I can. And so I'm always looking for those opportunities. We were required to, but I enjoyed taking all the courses around ELs and learning about how students acquire a second language and how they become multilingual. You know, there was kind of the, the business manager 15 hour version, and then there was the superintendent version, which was a little bit longer. I took them both. So, you know, I've tried to fill in holes anywhere that, anywhere that I can. But in terms of a PD plan, that's, that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to keep going. I just got my professional certification as a superintendent. Having worked three years as assistant superintendent, that was the last piece of that puzzle. So it was important to me to, to round that off and, and finish that up. So I've, I'm always looking for the next way to grow. I'm serious when I talk about, you know, learning different languages and kind of re-upping not only my Spanish, but learning some other languages and being involved in those kinds of things. I want to, it will help me just keep growing and learning, so.
Thank you.
In your, your current committee staff, will you, I'm sorry. If, if your current committee or staff were asked to identify your greatest weakness, what would, what would they say? And how would you know that they would respond this way?
I think I tend to work fast. So if I, I work fast. So if I like an idea, I want to try it. Now, some people might say that's a strength, but I, I, it's often perceived as a weakness because sometimes, you know, if something's very innovative and I think it's exciting and I think it'll help kids, then I'm going to say, let's try it. And then, you know, everybody around me is like, well, this could go wrong, that could go wrong, this could go wrong. And they'll give me all the different reasons why it's going to fail. I know them, trust me, I've probably already thought of them. But I want to try it anyway. And it's okay if a component of that fails or a component of that didn't do as well as we thought. It's better to me than just kind of waiting to get all the pieces in place and everything planned out and everything perfect before we push go. I tend to build the plane while it's flying. And some people see that as a weakness, I don't know, I kind of, it's just the way I am. But that, so I think that the school committee would tell you that, you know, that, you know, I tend to work quickly. If I see something and I think it's exciting, I'm like, let's do it, you know? So it's hard. I think the other weakness for me is, I don't know what they would say. Sometimes I have to challenge myself to come out of my lane a little bit. I tend to be a little introverted. You know, I think for me, sometimes it's just getting, I have to, it doesn't come naturally to me to just walk into a classroom or walk into a board meeting or walk into a select board meeting or into something like that, or even to walk onto a football field and start talking about people. And, you know, he puts the microphone in my face and asks me how the quarterback's doing, you know, and I'm like, I don't know yet, let me find out, you know, whereas somebody else can just tell you. So, you know, I have to learn those things. And I will, and I'll figure that out. But I need, I need to figure that out. I need to know about it and learn about it.
Thank you.
Excuse me. So earlier, talking about social, emotional and everything, and people are always talking about kids' stresses in school and too much on their plate. So I want to know, what is your opinion on students with the homework and why, if it's a benefits, cons, benefits?
Understood. Thank you. I've given a lot of thought to this, and we've had a lot of conversations in Hanover. There's a, there are very pro and very con people in terms of homework. And so for me, what I've always said, and again, I've got, you know, two of my three kids went through AP program, so they certainly had plenty of homework to do. For me, it's all about purpose. So I don't see any reason to give homework just for the sake of giving homework. So, you know, I don't need, you know, a half an hour of just, just because, you know, I said I was going to give half an hour of homework every night and so I'm going to. It has to have a purpose. What is that homework going to do? Either, two purposes. It either needs to reinforce what I did in class, right? So it has to have an active connection to what just happened in class. It also can be a preview for the next class. So homework can have either one of those two purposes, but you have to be really clear about that when you assign it. Because it's different sources of stress for the kid, right? So if the homework is review or is just a reinforcement of what went on in class, most kids should be able to handle that. And, but you do need to be able to tell them, look, if you've spent twenty minutes on this problem, let's use math as an example, and you've truly spent twenty minutes on that problem and you can't get it, stop. Don't spend three hours on it, just stop. And we need to have that understanding, right? That we don't want kids up for three, four hours every night on a problem they're never going to figure out without any help. Or if it's a preview, and a lot of teachers do this, they'll say, you know, read chapter seventeen, because we just finished sixteen, so read chapter seventeen for homework, just so you've had a little bit of a pre-teaching. That's fine. But you need to explain to the kids, you may not understand everything you're going to read. That's okay. Don't stress about it. We're going, I'm going to teach it to you, but I want you to pre-teach it. So a lot of it with homework to me, I think it's important, I think it has its place, but it has to have a purpose. I'm not a no homework guy. I think people need to have some, but it has to be purposeful and the teachers have to be very articulate about what their expectations are for it. And then, if you're going to give it, it does have to count, right? So I think a lot of times, kids figure out real quick which teacher's where the homework counts and which doesn't, right? So if you're going to give it and you're going to say, this is important, I want you to do this homework, then you should be spending the first five minutes of class dealing with that and either going over it or, you know, don't ignore it, don't give it and then ignore it. So I'm not against it, I just think there's a place for it, but keep it manageable. Recognize, that particularly in high school, kids' lives go beyond the seven hours that they're in school. And they, some of them have to work, it's not a choice. Some of them need the athletics. Like I said, my daughter was a varsity basketball player. You know, she, that athletics was huge for her. It was not only an emotional outlet, but she was good at it, it gave her a lot of self-esteem for her, you know? That's true for most kids that play sports. And they need that just as much as they need the academics during the day. It's all in a balance. So if we take away the athletics because of homework, it can be, you're hurting the student on every level at that point. So I just think it needs to be balanced, but I'm not a totally against or totally for, as long as there's a purpose and it's articulated.
Well, that went by really fast. Thank you for tolerating all those questions.
Is it seven fifteen, right?
Almost. So I wanted to give you at least, you know, the last five to ten minutes to be able to do your closing statement and, you know, just give any closing remarks that you think.
Thank you, thank you. I'm a very collaborative leader. So what you're going to find in me is if we have a problem to solve or we have a situation, I'm going to get the constituents together that need to solve the problem, whether that's the, yourselves, the select board, you know, if it's a public situation or if it's more an administrative team situation, we're going to sit down in my office and we are going to work out the problem. Everybody's going to have a voice at the table, everybody's going to be heard, we're going to listen to the situation, and I'm going to make sure that everybody gets what they need to say, said. When we leave the meeting, we're going to have a plan moving forward. And it's going to be my expectation then as the leader, that everybody's on board with that plan. Even if five minutes before you just told me the eighteen ways it's going to fail, okay? Fine, got it, okay. But when we all agree, either by consensus or by, there's no consensus and I just say, look, I'm the boss, okay, and this is what I want to do, all right, fine, either way, that, well, if I'm the boss and I'm taking responsibility for it, then we're fine, right? So there's nothing wrong with that, and everybody just needs to be on board with it. The worst thing that can happen is to go into a meeting like that and then people try to undermine the decision, right, in their own ways. And so I've had that in my own career and in my own life. And so I will very actively make sure that, you know, once we decide, everybody's had a chance to say what they want to say, but this is the direction that we're going in. I had mentioned in the screening committee meeting, you know, your triennial plan is very tight, but I'm sure there are things that didn't get included in that, that are still, people are very passionate about. So, you know, how do we deal with that and make sure that those things are still included? So I think you'll find me very collaborative. I'm also all in. Like I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, this is the right time in my life. I very carefully chose this time in my life to start pursuing superintendencies because I, superintendencies, because I know the amount of time that's required. I know the weekends that are required, I know the early mornings and the late nights. I knew that I couldn't do it effectively when my kids were in high school. And so now that they're two out of three are launched and one's going to college, certainly I'm still their dad and I'm involved in their lives. But it's not the same as when they're all living at home, obviously. And so I have the time to devote. I have a very supportive spouse who understands that, who really is gunning for me, wants this change in my career. And so for me, it's the right time in my life. And so as a result, I'm all in. And I really do mean it when I say I'm in it for the next twelve years, right? I'm only fifty-three, I have plenty of time to grow into it, I want to take the time, I want to become part of the Stoughton community, I want to learn about the Stoughton community, I want to be here with you and grow with you. I think I'm uniquely suited because of the two MSBA projects that I've done. I've done the hard work of redistricting elementary schools, of moving elementary kids around. Again, in Hanover, we did a very different thing. We put all the K and one in one school and all the two, three and four in another school. It's a much smaller district, very, you wouldn't be able to do it here necessarily, but for different reasons, we needed to make sure there was consistency. We don't see with five elementary schools, I can only imagine the fight about consistency and making sure that everybody's doing the same thing. With two, it's like polarizing, because you only have two to compare. So we'd got, we needed to stop that. And so the way we did that is by putting all K and one together and all two, three and four together. But that was a tough conversation for some parents who had to suddenly drive across town or we had to figure out the transportation on that. We had to make some tough decisions about start times and stop times for schools and how kids were going to be transported and all of that. So you get through that by blinding transparency with parents. This is, you'll always know what's on my mind. You may not agree with it, but you'll always know what's on my mind, so that we can talk it through. And at the end of the day, I'm not afraid to make tough decisions, I'm not afraid to move forward with difficult decisions, but it will always be within the context of a collaborative conversation first. And if I can do it through consensus, awesome. If I can't and we just need to make a decision and I need to live with the consequences, I have broad shoulders and I can handle that as well. So as a closing statement, I think that's the best thing I can say. I look forward to, I had mentioned, Jim mentioned that you might want to do a site visit on August tenth. That's fine, I can do that, I can do whatever you want to do. I look forward to an opportunity to come visit Stoughton if that's part of the plan. I was kind of curious what the next steps were kind of beyond, beyond that, but I'm ready for all of it. I can't wait. And my, and my community's supportive. So let me, let me end with this. If you ask anybody in Hanover, they're going to be upset that I'm leaving. I got a lot of half-hearted, you know, good looks when I left the office today. But they, they know this is important to me. And so the community is very supportive. My school committee is aware that I'm sitting here. This is not a surprise to them, you're welcome to reach out to any of them, you're welcome to reach out to any of the principals. And they will tell you, you know, anything you want to know about me. I've been in Hanover for thirteen years, so I'm pretty well established there. But I'm looking for the change, they know I'm looking for the change. My superintendent is supportive. He understands, you know, this is a tough time of year to do a transition like this. He will make it work, what he told me, he said, you know, I have a sixty-day resignation clause in my contract. But he said to me, look, we'll make it work, we'll figure it out. Of course, that means I'm going to work twice as hard, I get that. But that's okay. He is committed to this, he knows that this is what I want. He'd love to have me stay until he retires, he'd be thrilled if I stayed until he retired. But that's not what I want. And so he, he is supportive and will do what it takes to make this transition work. So there's no issues around that. We'll figure it out.
That's great. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And, you know, drive safe on your ride back.
Thank you.
There'll be no traffic this time.
It wasn't bad. I took one thirty-nine down, yeah, it was easy enough.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
It's nice to see you without the screen.
Yes, thank you, I'm thrilled.
Okay, I think we'll take a, just looking at a short break and we'll be back.
Take two.
It's a long evening for you all.
Okay, so welcome and thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Dr. Stevens, we're excited to have you for our second interview of the evening. Just to give you an idea of the setup of the interview process tonight, we're going to give you a little time to give an opening statement, five to ten minutes. Then we're going to go through some set, fixed questions that we have, they should be at the table. Do you have the questions?
I don't, actually.
All right. Our Jeffrey Pickett, for everyone to see, will hand those to you, and I had an extra copy.
Thank you, I hope, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Pickett. So those, we're going to go through those and we're going to ask you those questions so that should, you should be able to follow it that way.
Great, thank you.
And then at the end of the interview, I will give you the last ten minutes to give us an opening remark statement. So we'll go from there. I'll introduce the folks on the school committee board and that way you have an idea. It's Fabian Francois Marset, Anita Hill, Sandra Gropey, Katie Peanut Anokian, and Joe McDonough.
How do you do?
So I will hand it to you now.
Great, thank you. Thank you all, I appreciate this opportunity and I'm particularly glad to be here with you all in person. It's the first time I've worn the suit in quite a while. My name is Andrew Stevens and I've been in education for about twenty-four years now. And I think that my experience as a high school history teacher in Vermont, Massachusetts, and as an administrator in Hall and Ducksbury and Lexington have prepared me very well for the superintendency. I want to acknowledge that you all have a very tough job in selecting the person for this job that possesses, you know, what I think is the intersection between the right mix of specific experience or what I call the what of the job, key leadership skills and beliefs and the capacity to learn and grow, which is really around the how of the job, and a clear idea of why they want to work in the district. And my goal is, in my opening statement in this interview, is to make the case for why I'm the best person for the job. In terms of the what, I have extensive experience in all areas of school and personnel management, from budget development to program implementation to evaluation. And my application materials, I think extensively talk about those, so I don't want to take time today just giving you a litany of lists. But a particular note, I wanted to just point out that I've been involved in all aspects of the design, construction, and move from two separate buildings into a combined middle high school, which I think intersects with a need that you may be thinking about down the road. And I currently run a building with twenty-three hundred students and over three hundred staff members and I manage a budget of thirty million dollars. And I think that gives me a good understanding of the scale of a district of similar size connected to Stoughton. And in short, I have a lot of experience in the what. In terms of the how, I'm a leader who's focused on what's good for kids. I have a passion about what I do for a living that is infectious, and I believe that teaching and learning needs to be at the center of everything we do. I have been very successful as a leader because I've tried to follow three main beliefs that guide how I conduct myself. The first is respect. I think respect is at the root of all productive relationships and interactions. It's the key foundation to any successful school or district, and the leader needs to be able to communicate and listen respectfully in order to ask that others do the same. It starts at the top, from my perspective. I truly believe that all kids can learn and achieve at a high level if they are given the support and authentic idea and belief that they are valued. At the heart of this is the idea that we as adults really have to know our students, both as learners and as people. And that if students are given a clear expectations and have the idea that their teachers and their administrators know them and value them and won't give up on them, they will respond and grow and achieve. And this guides how I look at the potential of all of our students. And it also guides how I view the teachers and administrators with whom I work and evaluate, because the same approach works for them as well, in my experience. The last piece is that reflection and collegiality are key instruments of growth for teachers, students, and administrators. And these both need to be fostered and supported tangibly and symbolically. And my own growth has never occurred in a vacuum, and it's always occurred through a cycle of inquiry, conversation, and reflection, over and over and over again. And I try to model that that process as it is often the key to my own growth as a leader and as a person. And I found that adherence to my core values helps me to lead by example and to inspire and strive to be better at what we do to benefit our kids. And these traits, I feel, are particular strengths of mine in terms of the how of leadership. And another key question I'd like to, or area I'd like to address is, is why Stoughton? Because I think that the priorities, I've done a lot of research on Stoughton, I've watched a lot of meetings, and I think that the priorities and the direction that Stoughton has demonstrated match mine in a lot of areas. And I see places where my experience could be useful to the district and my style could be useful to the district. And it's why this is the only district to which I've applied for a superintendency. Is it? And so I find that, for instance, in Stoughton, I see a community that's done work to articulate core values and beliefs that are powerful and meaningful and that there's an attempt to try to make them actually real for kids and families. You know, education is a lifelong process, all students can learn, education is a partnership, educational opportunities are enhanced by celebrating the diversity of the community. Those are really, really powerful statements that aren't powerful if they're only on paper. They are powerful if they're actually lived and breathed and are visible and evident and are part of the lifeblood of the schools and the district. And I just think those are wonderful statements that are, that are here and that are guiding beliefs. In Stoughton, I see a diverse community that's undergone and is undergoing a demographic shift in the past twenty years from racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic standpoint and with regard to a burgeoning ELL population of students and families that are moving into the district. And I think that that demographic shift is clear, looking over, over time, and presents wonderful opportunities for, from a school, district, and communities, and cultural standpoint. And it also presents challenges as we develop approaches to try to provide every student with the opportunity for rigorous education, along with targeted supports for the students who need it. And those opportunities and challenges are what I seek as an educator and leader. It's the reason why I moved from the South Shore to where I am now, and this is another reason for what I find so cloying to me as an educator and a leader. In Stoughton, I see a district that's embraced the needs of students and families through a budget process, that tells a clear story, that reflects the priorities, the values, and the commitment to students. The creation of just a few things that I noticed in the budget, that, and budgets are tied to, they do tell a story. They narrate what is valued in a district, by the district, by the people who frame it, and then by the community in terms of their support for it. You know, the creation of a special education stabilization fund that allows for flexibility for students who may need more services. The commitment to small class sizes, that is a clear priority that is in this district, especially at the elementary level. And then expanding that particular ethic with the ESER funds as part of that. Early literacy focus, you know, the units of study, the workshop models at the elementary school, the commitment to what is pricey, PD, to be able to get that to the elementary school teachers, to put that into practice and make it live. The program creation and support, ALS, bright at the high school, language-based programs, behavioral program, ESL, ELL expansion into all of the elementary schools and all of the buildings as part of the triennial plan, you know, the alternative high school. Extended school day supports, summer supports, you know, that are targeted for the Stoughton students with a focus on, on a number of different areas, remediation and addressing learning loss, extension and enrichment, as well as acceleration and enrichment. And the ESER funds, after watching a number of school committee meetings, that there, that has, the opportunities that that has created and the expansion of that is amazing to me, and that's through FY24. And then the, you know, just the, seeing all that and the fact that all of those are free for a Stoughton student and family could avail themselves of these opportunities from pre-K through high school, both in terms of during the school year and during the summer, and it's free. And that is not the case in every district. In fact, that's not the case in most districts in terms of the amount of programming and support that is available. So that's an amazing amount of budget support that comes with that, that tells a story. In Stoughton, I see a community support for new facilities. There's a focus clearly on providing students and faculty in the community with up-to-date facilities and completion of the new high school and the SOI that's been put in place for the new elementary school with the possibility of another SOI connected to Wilkins School. And that's a sign of community financial commitment and recognition that taking on the debt of a school building, school building projects, secures the future of the program, of the educational programs. And I've had direct experience, as I said a little bit earlier, with the move from Ducksbury High School and Ducksbury Middle School into Ducksbury Middle High School. And that is both a logistical challenge, a planning challenge, and it is a culture shift. And so navigating that was and would be, depending on what route is taken in this district. But that's something I have a fair amount of experience with. In Stoughton, I see a culture of community support. You know, I see there's an incredibly strong support for the schools in Stoughton. The schools are a huge part of the community spirit and identity through athletics, through performing arts, through clubs and activities. It's just the lifeblood of this town is, and the identity of the school are inextricably linked, and there's pride that comes with that. I see community support and confidence in the district. And I didn't see many of them, but the town meeting votes for the budget for the school seem to be pretty quick in that sense. I may be wrong, but I think that shows that there's a reflection of confidence in the preparation that is done by the school and in the defense of the budget that is presented. And I see a school committee, not to flatter, but I've watched a lot of school committee meetings over the last few weeks, and I see a school committee of dedicated individuals who work in concert with the administration on behalf of kids. Very professional, well-run meetings, they're run on a tight clock that I think gets to business, but there's professionalism, accountability, and transparency, putting things out in the open. There was an issue I know with bidding from last year where this committee got in front of it, you know, named it, addressed it, tried to address what happened and why and what, how do you solve the problem? And, you know, identify the issue, own the issue, check the ego, work the problem. That's how I like to do business, and I just see, and it's not always like that in every district. And I see a desire also for, especially at the high school I know, to articulate a vision of the graduate, which presents, I think, a great opportunity to view that idea at the system level and systemic level. I want to work in this district because I think I can help revisit and bring life to the core values of the district, continue to develop budgets that focus on student supports and teaching and learning, identify those particular supports that ESER funds have been able to make possible, to prioritize which ones we would want to keep and weave into the budget process, continue the MSBA process, and expand on the school community links that mark this district. And so thus, I believe my experience, my leadership ability, my capacity for growth make me a strong candidate for a superintendent position. With Stoughton, I see a community that values its educational program and has committed resources to improve that program for all students. It's also a district that is clearly interested in moving forward and not resting on its laurels. And with Stoughton, I see strong parallels between my experience and where this place is and wants to be. Again, I thank you for the opportunity to be here and look forward to showing you that I'm the best person for this position. Thank you.
Thank you for that introduction and welcome. I'd like to kick off our first question. Have you had to deal with children and families in distressful situations without identifying anyone? Can you tell us of situations where the social and emotional needs of children and their families have moved you to action?
I've been in education since 1995, and I'd say the level of distressful situations that I've been exposed to in terms, and that kids and families have gone through, especially from a social-emotional standpoint, has increased tremendously for a lot of reasons that would take a long time to unpack. But that is something, yes, I've had many instances where we've been dealing with children and families in distressful situations, whether it is tied to, from a socioeconomic standpoint, you know, students who are losing, you know, and where, who are becoming homeless and working with, you know, the McKinney-Vento, the homeless coordinator that we have, every district has to have one, but working with, and making sure that we're compliant with McKinney-Vento and getting those students to and from school from wherever they are. We've had a number of different situations with that. We've had situations with students who have been in really bad accidents and, you know, helping them work through not only getting better, but also trying to help them move forward academically. We've had issues with students whose parents have passed away for various, and working with kids to make sure that they have the supports in school and out of school. That sometimes involves school counselors, administrators, it might involve the SRO, because it may be connected to students who, where there's a legal aspect that has to be addressed. We've had issues with students where there have been sexual assaults, where there have been all sorts of distress that's caused, and, you know, the thing we want to try to do is help the student and try to be able to, you know, find a way to be able to get parents and get the kids what they need that we have the ability to be able to give, you know, because that's, there are limits to where and what we can do. But I think that, it's hard for me to identify a particular one situation, because I've just laid out some that we dealt with last year, every one of those. And so in some capacity or way, shape, or form, and unfortunately, I have a lot of experience with doing, with working with that. I think the biggest thing is just making sure you have a really solid process by which you are keeping track of students, right? And that happens at the local level with student support teams that meet weekly in order to talk about, that's, they really focus on kids and what's going on in their lives and trying to make sure that we're covering the bases for them. And a lot of that is lower-level kind of issues that ultimately are getting in the way of kids being able to access their education for one reason or another. And then when you get the bigger ones that occur, it's important to have a process by which you are able to identify, A, this is not a standard kind of event that's occurring, we need to pull together our crisis response team or our, the kind of building level or sometimes the system level, you know, response teams to think about, what is it that we need to be thinking about? What is the, you know, sometimes there are things where we have to communicate out to the, out to the community or to the teachers, or just to the teachers that are involved in the students, and being thoughtful about how and where that's going to be and so that you don't miss bases is also really important as well. So I've had lots of experience with that, unfortunately.
Dr. Stevens, how would you develop your plan to prepare for and begin your superintendency? How would you develop your entry plan and prepare for your first few weeks, months, or for your first year? Whom would you consider to be essential sources of information, critical friends, and strategic allies?
Thank you, good question. And there's the answer I could give you if we were having this process in April and talking about this, where the summer is available to be able to do, if there's a July 1 start. This is not necessarily a standard entry kind of process that would happen for me, given that if I were to get this, we're looking at a September-ish start date, right? And so, you know, the first word of business would be, depending on how much time is available, to try to be able to meet as much as possible with the admin team, with school-based teams, in order to be able to introduce myself and start the process of listening in terms of what's going well and what are some of the things that you think are areas we need to work on, what are concerns that you have? And, you know, at the same time, it's about really getting ready to open school and make sure that the school opening is ready to go and that it's going to be a safe landing for all of the students, because we're coming back from a pandemic. And so there are kids who may not have ever come to school last year possibly, who are coming back to school. How are we actually bringing these students back in? So kind of the entry will probably be happening with, while also getting, doing business. You know, so the, in a perfect world, I would also be able to have those conversations with, you know, parent groups and student groups to be able to kind of start getting that flavor, and then also look at, on the town side as well, the town manager, you know, various members of the select board, police, fire, just to really kind of do the talking and walking and listening tour. That would be happening. It's hard to figure out what cleanly, what, when and where that would occur, given that this was, would not be a standard entry plan with regard to that. I think the other piece is that we would be also starting up, if this place is any similar to any of the other districts I've worked, the budget process starts right up at the beginning of the year. And so through those, even though that is non-standard and a little more truncated, there are opportunities to be able to do those introductions and meetings. I'm used to doing and running through a lot of meetings, and I have a lot of energy for it. I like meeting new people. I like being able to talk about, because what we're ultimately talking about is we may be coming at it from different angles, but we're all talking about the same thing. You know, we want to do what's best for kids first, we want to do what's best for the schools, we want to do what's best for Stoughton. And sometimes there are angles and focus areas that may have some level of where we have to do negotiating or discussion or such. But I think it's first and foremost important to get to know people on a human level and identify kind of where those are. From that, you build respect, you build trust, you build the ability to be able to work with people, even if you don't always agree. And so I think the critical allies, you know, for me, would be the leadership team, the admin team that is connected to each of the schools. I think that then it's, and I don't put these in any particular order, because I think it would be very important to be able to meet with members of the school committee in order to be able to get, you know, in terms of meeting our meeting laws, but be able to get a read from you in terms of what some of those particular focus areas and areas we need to improve on from your perspective are. And then over the course of, I know I will be, I don't want to say made, but I think that one of the things I know I will have to do is, will be part of the new superintendent's group through MSSAA, I believe, and one of the things that they have you do is an entry plan. And so I would be following a lot of those particular processes connected to that, if that's something that is, continues as I would imagine it would. So that's what I would be doing for, I think it would be a busy couple of months before moving on.
The citizens in our community demand value for their tax dollars and transparency and fiscal accountability. In this light, what has been your involvement with your district's budget planning and development? And tell us about how you will ensure that the budget you propose to the school committee is as efficient as possible.
Thank you. It's a, and I hinted at, I looked at, you know, budgets tell a story, and there is not an endless reservoir of resources, especially in the times that we're living in now. You know, I think that the budget that was put forth for this year was very conservative and rightly so. I think that's exactly what it was touted as, as being very conservative and rightly so. So I think that, you know, any taxpayer wants value for what their hard-earned money is going into. For me, you know, the process that I'm used to from a, from a budget-building process is, it's a team effort in terms of building a budget. You start with, you know, some of the particular, on the educational side, right? So there's the educational side, there's the school committee side, there's the town side. The educational side is meeting with the particular department leaders, budget leaders in, within the particular buildings, outlining what, you know, what some of the goals are that they may have, some of the things that they think are really important in order to be able to move forward, move the educational program forward, and to really spend time winnowing down wants from needs, because that's a really important piece. I don't think it necessarily hurts to talk about the things that the school thinks is important to be able to move forward. Doesn't necessarily mean that all of them get there, but that's the important first step. It's also important to be able to, you know, have an idea, and lots of meetings with the business manager around, you know, annual increases, what are the, what are the kind of entitlements that are connected to healthcare, to salary increases, you know, your contracted piece to it. You know, you're talking to your facilities manager about what are the, any capital projects that are in place, what are those particular things that have that looking like? Any contracted services that we envision are going to be going up? Transportation is a big one as well, special ed, try to get a read on what circuit breaker looks like, you know, try to get a read on what all of the lay of the land is with what it's going to look like. And then that's on the town side. It's also looking at, you know, town receipts and seeing what that, you know, that piece is going to look like to figure out whether or not, are we looking at a, you know, a place where we can be moving forward with a level service budget? Is it a place where we may have to be looking at a level-funded budget, or we may have to be looking at reductions? I am used to, in one school, we've, it was a smaller district, we had to freeze the budget by November, and, you know, there was really not a movement at all beyond that because there was so much volatility with the process. In another district, we had to develop plans for if it was going to be looking and it wasn't sure, then we had to be ready for it from the educational side of it, which is, what's it going to look like with a level service, you know? And here's how much that would be, you would be able to have, and what would that thing look like that you would be doing in your particular buildings or district? What would a level-funded piece, where there is no increase that's occurring, it's exactly what it was last year, is exactly what we get this year? And then what is your strategy if we needed to cut? I don't necessarily think that that's an exercise you go through all the time, but that, those are the kind of areas that you'd have to be ready to go. And if you're in a place where, you know, after all of that is being done, and a lot of that, there's negotiation that occurs with it as well, where you land on that kind of final figure ultimately in terms of what percentage we're going to move forward with the budget, you know, and it looks like there's anything that has to be reduced, what's the furthest thing possible from classroom and kids? Because that is, has to be at the center of everything we do. And I've worked a process where, when we had to have a pretty significant, I think in my building, we had to cut about $300,000, which was not nothing, that, you know, concentric circles, and we worked with kids and teachers in the middle, and what were all the things that were outside of that that might support it, but that, you know, you can see things moving further and further away from that, which are, you know, supplies, for instance, and things like that. And you look at those things first before you're moving into teachers and kids. But that would be, that's a lot of work and it's a lot of conversations, and it's a process that would, needs to occur with fidelity in order to make sure that the most efficient and the most fiscally sound budget is proposed.
Thank you.
How do you determine the success of your district? How would you define success over short term or long, over the long run?
Took some notes on this. And I think there's a lot of, a lot of ways to define success, right? You know, is there a way that, you know, the normal ways that, or kind of the surface ways that people look at the success is what they find on the internet, right? They look at test scores, they look at, you know, perhaps they look at budgets, perhaps they look at those other kind of things that don't necessarily get you to what I ultimately think is the mark of a successful district. You know, as I said before, I think the mark of a successful district is one where every kid has equitable access to a rigorous education, that every student has the ability to be able to, you know, that is having challenges, that is having struggles, that there are resources available to be able to meet the needs of those particular students. You know, if we ultimately have a place where kids are able to get, you know, a rigorous education, targeted feedback, and clear criteria for how they can improve as students, and then we have a means to be able to measure that and then be able to utilize remediations as we need to. MCAS is not great with that. You get MCAS data, and then you look at it in the fall for the group of kids from the year before, and then you make, you know, you identify remediations, and it's for a totally different group of kids. It's not really helpful with that. And so, you know, a successful district is one where there are internal, you know, benchmarks, whether they're benchmarks or whether they're unit kind of tests that are utilized or assessments that are utilized by teachers who are meeting together to identify, one, to develop and then to analyze those particular results, so that then any particular issues that can be tied to whether it's content or skill-based can actually then be brought back into the classroom and remediated right in the moment. You know, I think one where, where a successful district is also one where, you know, we've really been clear about what the vision is that we think is, what we, what we think as a community that all kids should walk out of here either knowing or able to do, and from a content standpoint, from a skill standpoint, from a social-emotional standpoint. And that's really a vision then that is articulated and clear, and it's one where it is also evident all the way through the district. And it's taught, and it's, kids are given feedback and are allowed a room to be able to grow. Those are all things that I think of ultimately make a successful district. And so, you know, over the short run, and that's both a short run and a long run, because I think the first word of business and is part of what would be my entry plan, going back to that, is identifying what is it that we do along these particular lines? What are those supports that we have? What are those assessments that we have? How do we try to find and get information with regard to what those kind of things look like and what do we need to identify that we need to make changes with? So I think that those are both, both short and long-term areas that I think mark a successful district.
Thank you.
So what do you see as the most important issues facing public schools and why?
I don't know where to start. You know, I think that, I think there, the largest thing I think that has happened, as I mentioned this, from 1995 to now, education has changed tremendously. Schools are not about a teacher standing in front of a chalkboard and conveying, conveying information to kids as the font of all knowledge, right? So when you look at it, it depends on the lens you look at it through, but pedagogically, education has changed tremendously. I think that that is a great thing. It's also a huge challenge. I think that we stand on tectonic plates that are moving. I think that, you know, the social-emotional challenges that are being, are walking into our building on a day-to-day basis really are, put schools in a place where they're providing really are, put schools in a place where they're providing much more services, much from a counseling standpoint and from a support standpoint. It is the right thing to do, it must occur. That's not what used to happen. Schools where you went, from my perspective, when I was, went to schools in the ancient eighties, those supports weren't there. And I think that that is both a mark of growth and expanding, you know, the idea that more expansive view that education has. And it's also a mark of just what, how different the student population is coming into our building on a day to day basis. You know, I think that the increasing, I have two daughters. I have a daughter who's a sophomore in college, I have a daughter who's a senior in high school. The pressure that kids are under that, that links to both social emotional and academic is unbelievable. That kids both are put under and some parents are better than others in terms of mitigating those pressures. There's the social pressures and then the, the idea of what kids have for what they think success is and looks like. And the, the amount of stress and worry that I see is unbelievable to me. And so, put that on top of schools and, you know, financial constraints and, you know, the pressure that's put connected to testing and performance. And those are the most important issues, I think, facing public schools. And again, it gets me back to, well, what do we think? What are our core values, you know, in terms of what we think is really important? And there are things that we have to do that we're told we have to do. And then there are things that we have agency to be able to have some say over, you know? What is it that we want kids to know and do when they walk out of here? How do we go about doing that? How do we go about being really clear and doing that in a systemic and systematic way that gets them ready for life? When, when all of those pressures are still going to be there when they leave here? And so, that's what I think.
Tell us about your experience working with children and families who don't look like you or speak the language you do or do not have the economic advantages you do. How have these experiences shaped your view of public education and its mission?
You know, I think that, sorry, I'm flipping through here. You know, I grew up, up in northern Vermont and was on free and reduced lunch. And I, I remember distinctly when you went in to get in the morning your ticket for lunch. You got them for the week. And the kids who went in and bought their tickets, they were gold. And the kids who had free and reduced lunch, they were red, bright red. And when you walked into lunch and when you were trying to pay for that, everybody knew where you were and what you were, you know, kind of what that was. And there were judgments that came with that, that never left me. And so, the idea of feeling different, it's not the same context because I was from Vermont and Vermont is the whitest state in the union. So it was not racial or ethnic diversity that I was part, I was exposed to. It was socioeconomic diversity at a massive level. And that's never left me. And I think that, that, you know, when I, when I, it's part of the reason I got into education because there were a lot of kids who, who really, that was, that was a struggle for them. And I think that when I'm, you know, it's part of the reason that I started out at, really at Newton North High School. And, you know, I think that, that the idea of, from my end of it, I was able to get a much better experience with the idea that diversity takes many, many, many forms. You know, I, I think there's racial, ethnic, sexual orientation, socioeconomic learning style, diversity of opinion and thought. And what do we do as a school and as a teacher? You know, how do I reflect the value that everyone is welcome here, right? How do I reflect the value that everyone has a place here? How do I reflect the value that we believe that all students can learn? And the diversity of experience and thought and, and culture is at the center of what we want as an educational institution? How do we celebrate this, right? And to our practices, I used to check myself as a teacher, you know, to what degree does, do my practices as a teacher, to what degree do my practices as an administrator reflect this belief? Because there's the spoken belief, right? And then there is the actual acted upon belief. And is the spoken the actual reality? And, you know, does our culture reflect this value? Do our curric, does our curriculum promote inclusivity wherever possible? Does our schedule and our groupings, do our leveling practices, do our discipline practices, do our teaching practices reflect inclusivity? Do our assessment results indicate mastery for all of our students' groups and subgroups? Are we demanding from students or are we providing all students a rigorous or an access, equitable access to a rigorous education? And so, those are, those are things that I, I think of when looking at this particular question. And I, you know, we're in the midst in my current school of all of these conversations with regard to this. Because the actual reality is not necessarily jiving with the spoken value. And so, how do you, how do you deal with that? Again, I go back to, you know, what's the problem? Own what you got to own and then try to actually work the problem with regard to that. I think it's also important that, you know, the thing that often is forgotten and that we tend to do is kids will tell you exactly what's going on. And, you know, finding an ability to provide agency to be able to understand that what that experience is, gives you, if you are not of that particular, whether it's cultural group, socioeconomic group, or you don't, you aren't part of that, it gives you a chance to be able to understand what it is like to be part of that and what that experience might be in the building that you might have some agency over as administrator. And I found that that is, doesn't mean that I understand the lived experience in any way, shape or form, because that's just impossible. But opening up the door to empathy and the idea that equity is really, really important and that you actually are going to look at systems and that with that ethic in mind, with that lens in mind, that's how you go about, I think, trying to have a better understanding and to be able to provide a better experience for kids who might not necessarily see themselves much in the curriculum or in the adult teaching population as well.
Dr. Stevens, how much independence would you provide to your department heads and principals in selecting their staffs? And what would be the role of the superintendent in assessing the effectiveness of the administration?
The effectiveness with regard to hiring practices or just overall?
In general, of hiring, this is the question.
Okay. Good question. I think that, you know, there's the balance, right? A lot of that is connected to conversations with the leadership team in terms of what or who are we looking at or, or want as candidates that we want in our buildings, working with kids on a, on a day to, on a day to day basis. You know, I think hiring is, if not one of, it might be the most important thing that we do as administrators. You know, I think along with what I, what I consider the other one is, is the supervision and evaluation of teachers as well. But it's really important to have systems in place for consistency of hiring practices. So I think autonomy can occur in the sense of, I'm not good, I'm not able to go into every interview for every position that's in the school. That's, that shouldn't be my job. If that is what I have to do as my job, we have a lot of problems. And, you know, I, I strongly believe that it is important to put the right people in place and you have to have trust in their ability to have good judgment. And there's also, what's really important is a clear understanding and criteria for what are some of the characteristics? What are some of the dispositions that we're looking for with teachers that are coming into this building? I meet every single person that is being recommended for a hire at Lexington High School. And we hired 40 teachers this year, teachers and staff members this year. I met every single one of them. And so, you know, there's a place where, you know, and I get to ask them questions as well. I envision that, and that was something that happened in my other district that was roughly the same, same size as Stoughton. So I envision that at some point that may be the case as well here. I'm not sure what the practices are and I would have to familiarize myself with that. But, you know, subject knowledge for me is, is important and can be learned. You know, for me, it's really about are candidates fundamentally student focused? Can they articulate their educational platform? Do they have core beliefs that define who they are as educators? You know, can they articulate how they trace concept and skills over time? Can they articulate varied instructional and assessment strategies? Do we do a model lesson with them where they come in and they actually teach in front of kids and administrators? Totally contrived, totally nerve wracking for them. But if they can produce there, they sure can produce most likely when we want them, you know, overseeing kids and, and, and teaching kids. And so, it's establishing what is it, what are those general criteria that we're looking for that we would want to be doing as a team, as a leadership team? And then I would want to give them autonomy to be able to find those people and be able to run through those processes, the hiring processes. And then before vetting the candidates and sending them to me. And preferably that the principal is involved pretty heavily with that particular process. But those are a couple of different ways that, that I, I have done hiring in the past and I currently do hiring now. And it's worked in that sense. I don't go into a discussion with teachers, it does have to happen at the department level. At some point, you're, you're asking them about physics, you're asking them about calculus. I was a history major, I'm not going to ask any of those questions. I care about, do they walk in and can they articulate skill and content objectives in student friendly language? Can they assess them? Does their lessons have a beginning, a middle and an end? Can they talk about how they trace things over the course of a year? That's what I care about. Do they understand what tier one approaches are when kids are not getting what, what you're, what they're teaching? Do they have the ability to be able to apply those particular concepts? And so, if we're all on the same page in terms of that generally, that's kind of the teachers we're looking for, then there's room to be able to absolutely give people the ability to do the job for which they were hired. Department heads and principals, part of their job is hiring teachers. And so, that's how I see that playing out.
Thank you.
Multicultural experience, experiences are much more than just race, language or place of origin. What experiences do you have that relate to multicultural experiences? Especially when some cultures have different values from your own? How do these experiences affect the way you work?
I think I kind of hit it a little bit in the, the prior question, just that, that, I mean, we were talking about, in a lot of ways, everything is culture when you get down to it. You know, socioeconomic class is culture, race is culture, ethnicity is culture, religion is culture, politics is culture. And, you know, the, so I, I have experiences with relating to different cultural experiences from my own lens, given where I came from and kind of what I, what I, what my experience was with that. You know, it's, you know, the key in, in trying to, if we really are trying to walk the talk that says that, you know, one of the, I believe the, the core beliefs of Stoughton schools is that, you know, celebrating the diversity and the opportunities that diversity can bring to our community is that that's going to be different cultures and different perspectives. How do we actually go about working with kids and with parents especially to, because I, I have experience in Lexington where we have over 50% of our school is non-white. We have a very large Asian population. We have parents and students who are coming from a totally different part of the world and coming here and have no understanding of what the school system is like. That are coming from a society that is collectivist in nature as opposed to, you know, the American model is much more individualist in nature. And, and that plays out at both the macro level in terms of how, you know, parents and students interact with the community. And definitely plays out with how parents and students interact with the schools. And so, you know, understanding that and where kids are coming from with regard to just that example, then that may require more focused outreach that happens from, from teachers and from support, you know, counselors for instance, for parents and kids who are not used to doing it that way. Because that's not the way that they, that their culture goes about doing that. There are other places that are really small where, that can work out in the classroom where there are kids from cultures where eye contact is considered very rude between kids and adults. And you have an adult, if they are coming from a particular culture, that I came from, I was told many, many times by my parents to look at me when I'm talking to you. And that can, can run into a misunderstanding that then has a social emotional impact and could possibly have a disciplinary impact on a kid. And that is through ignorance. And that's not, I'm not using that pejoratively because we're, we're all ignorant of what other cultures have. There are many, many, many different ways that that manifests itself in schools, right? And so, you know, building a bridge to be able, you know, that's the part about knowing your kids that's really important for teachers. And understanding, and also understanding triggers for anxiety. Because those triggers are different for different kids depending on their cultural kind of, of bag that they're bringing, that they're walking into school with every day. And I say that like it's easy and I really don't want to say that like it's easy. It's really hard and it puts a lot on teachers. And so, how do you support teachers and how do you support kids to be able to, you know, build capacity over time? And so, it's a short run and it's a super long run goal. We're in the midst of wrestling with that right now at Lexington High School and in the Lexington public schools. And this place would be no different.
Thank you.
How would you hold educators at all levels accountable for delivering effective instruction?
Well, I think it's, it's identifying what do you think are, you know, expectations are important to, you know, what do we consider to be effective instructional practices? What is it that they've been taught? You know, because I think different people are at different stages of their career. I think that the kid, you know, kids, I can't believe I'm saying this, but I am 50 now, I guess. So I can say kids who are coming out of teacher programs are far better prepared in a lot of different ways than I ever was in my teacher preparation program. And there are a lot of folks just like me in the classroom, right? Who have had to learn and change and adapt over time. And so, I think it's, it's, you know, and that is a team process, you know? What are the kind of teaching practices that we think are effective and that we want to be able to see? There's also the saying that that which is observed is that which gets done. I think that there is a really important piece where that's, that's the core of evaluation from my particular perspective. Because, you know, no different than what I would expect a teacher to be doing with a student, right? If there's an assessment coming up or there's some sort of place where the student is going to be observed doing something, has it been made clear what the criteria is? What are the things that, that are going to be looked at and looked for with that particular student? Is the student going to get feedback that helps them grow or, you know, as opposed to punish? And the same ethic is what you need to put into evaluation and into working with teachers. You know, teachers have to be willing to be able to take critique. That's an important piece. Critique doesn't mean punishment. Critique is critique, you know? Here are the things, I always like to work with the compliment sandwich. I loved what you were doing with X. You know, I, I noticed that something was happening with Y and I thought you did a really good job with the close of your, of your lesson, that you're really tight with this. Let's talk about why though, you know, that happened in the middle there. Well, you know, what did you see? What did you see going on? Here's what I observed. How can we, you know, what are the things that you can think about the next time around, the next time I'm coming in? Maybe I come in and we're gonna, you know, it's not, it's off the books and I'm having a conversation with you just to help you grow with this. You know, so I think there are a lot of different ways that, that you, you try to hold educators accountable. But I also think about the fact that, that, you know, if we are really interested in this business that we're in, which is a growth business, kids grow, teachers grow, then, you know, the way that you're holding teachers accountable is through clarity and through communication and through transparent communication and honest and humane critique. It may get to a point where it moves beyond that if a teacher is through, is, is not necessarily either able or willing to do those things. But I've found that those are rare and that teachers want to grow. Teachers want to come in and teachers want to do a good job by and large, that I've found in my experience. And there's a way to be able to, to navigate that, I think, that is really important, that promotes that ethic of growth.
Thank you.
If you could get rid of,
Sorry.
You kind of touched on it already. If you could get rid of high stakes testing for graduation requirements such as the MCAS, would you?
Well, I find,
Why and why not?
Sorry. I find the, you know, because what's behind MCAS is, is, you know, what's, are the state frameworks, you know, specific to a couple of subjects, right? And there's also the common core that, that, I, I loved the literacy aspect of it because it, it's standard 10, if I'm not mistaken, is really tied to the idea that, that the teaching of reading and writing is not just in the realm of English teachers and social studies teachers. Everybody does that. Everybody's a teacher of reading and writing, whether you're a math teacher, social studies teacher, what have you. And so, I think that what's behind the test are actually some things that, that forced schools, and I was there in the mid 90s when, you know, different schools taught the same subject in totally different ways. Teacher A who is in this room taught social studies completely, the same class. Teacher A, who is in this room, taught social studies completely, the same class, the same course, and totally differently than teacher B. So those kids were, had a totally different and inequitable access to the content and curriculum. And everybody has a right to equitable access to content and concepts. And that wasn't the case. That was a big piece of what this was trying to address, right? And the assessment is coming off of that, right? So I can't hate the entire process that comes with the assessment. I just find that the, you know, the way that it is utilized, you know, it does provide a, you know, kind of marker for where schools are and kids are at a particular time, you know, at a particular place in time. I think that it does a lot in terms of identifying where are we specifically with our, the student subgroups that otherwise would not get any attention. And I think that that's a really important thing, a bit of data that that gives us, right? Along with other things that we would want to use. The value of actually being able to do something about it with the group of kids that you have, that's the part that I hit upon that is less valuable. I don't know that I would get rid of it for those particular reasons, in the sense that if you did, then do you start looking at then having less consistency? And this is statewide. This is a macro kind of approach to this that I respect. It's really was trying to do something that I think has both raised the bar and, you know, a kid who's taking, you know, world history, you know, you know, a course as a freshman in Pittsfield versus, you know, Newton, or versus Stoughton, they're getting kind of the same concepts, because they have to follow the frameworks. And so, and the curriculum maps have to do that. And so there's a lot of value to what that is. So begrudgingly, I would say, no.
Thanks.
And I have no agency over that whatsoever.
So Stoughton is a diverse community with many different cultures. What can you, as the superintendent, do to help recruit the best and a more diverse faculty and staff in order to work here?
If I had the answer to that, I would be doing it in Lexington, where we're having the same exact challenge. Every school system in the state that is putting a focus on that particular goal is having the same challenges. And so what I can tell you, some of the approaches that we've had, we were able, we had an amazing year this year in terms of hiring, and also with regard to just really good candidates and a number of candidates of color. And that didn't happen by accident. It was one where, you know, there are particular job fairs that are specifically targeted for minority candidates that you have to go to, that as superintendent, if I'm trying to recruit folks to especially broaden the pool of applicants, you know, because part of the issue that we've run into is we've got these, we've got these great jobs that are available and our applicant pool is not diverse. And so is that a product of us not getting that out there? Or is that a product of folks that are, you know, BIPOC teachers are not wanting to come to the school for some reason? That's an interesting question to ask. Or is it just a disconnect that's occurring with regard to that? And I think that we actually were able to, and I talked about this in my first round of interviews, we linked with a program out of MIT, and if I'm not mistaken, that was able, we were able to identify a number of different candidates, specifically for math and science, candidates of color who applied and who did a great job in the interviews and the model lessons and were hired. And there's no magic formula for how you do it. I think that that's, the key, I think, is providing, getting that word out there as much as possible, encouraging candidates of color to apply with, in a number of different formats, in a number of different forums, I guess. And then, you know, having them go through the interview process and such, and giving them a chance. I think that's the most important piece that allows you then to see, you know, because I think it's important, and the research has been really clear, especially at the elementary level, when students of color, and particularly from what I recall from the researches around African-American students, you know, one experience with a teacher who was African-American, there were measurable differences in achievement from the kids who had that teacher versus kids who had never had a teacher of color in their classroom. It is measurable. And so that is, it's an important goal in the sense that if we're talking about diversity within schools, kids should have an ability as much as possible that you can do, you know, and it's a school. You know, we don't have a massive human resource department that can, you know, scour the country or such. You do what you can do within the resources you have. But a goal should be to try to provide kids with at least one, one experience, at least, which is really lowballing this, where they can see themselves in the classroom, you know, along with, you know, continuing to look at curriculum so that you find those areas where kids can see themselves in the curriculum. That's my answer for that.
Thank you.
Dr. Stevens, are you satisfied with your current district's performance? Why or why not? Looking back, is there something you should replicate or might have done differently? Please explain.
Well, if we went by the traditional metrics, very satisfied with our performance, right? Lexington High School is a high-performing school. It's consistently in the top four or five public schools in the state and is one of the tops in the country. Our graduation rate is fantastic. Kids do an amazing job on MCAS. I think that if you looked at those traditional metrics, I would be saying to you, there's nothing that I would change. And that goes back to the question you asked, because there are ways to be able to get information and data that shows that not every student group, not every student is necessarily experiencing that same level of success using that metric, right? And if we used a different, so thus, no, not satisfied completely, because I think that there are, and that really uncovers a lot of things, right? Especially around, you know, grading and leveling practices that really are the deep dives into, you know, where the rubber meets the road with instruction and assessment, quite honestly. And if we looked at discipline, if we looked at, you know, as I said, leveling practices with, you know, who and what students are in what groups, there's information that can be given to us and gotten that we look at with our own practice, that we need to look at with a really clear eye. And Lexington has had a long history of very clear demarcation between levels, and a lot of levels. And so the kids who are in the lowest-level classes, there's a particular, there are mostly special ed students and students of color, and particularly African-American and Hispanic. And so that says something. And so thus, then you're looking at curricular opportunities, you're looking at those particular things, and that then leads to why there are subgroups at Lexington who aren't necessarily performing well, or as well, right? If you looked at it from an SCL standpoint, there, we're not satisfied at all, because we have lots of kids who are really struggling. It's a, it is a pressure cooker environment that's going on that is a really hard nut to crack and is impacting all students. And some of the most highest-achieving, most squared-away kids that you could possibly think of by the standard and traditional metrics are struggling mightily. And so there are lots of areas where we're not satisfied with our performance. It really depends on what we think success is and how we're actually, you know, identifying what those things are. And I tend to think that it's important to look at the whole child when you're doing that.
Thank you.
What have you done to prepare yourself for the superintendency? What are the strengths that you bring to the position? And what would be your personal professional development plan where you, if you were to become superintendent?
Thanks, good question. So over the course of my career, I've increasingly gone from smaller to larger schools as an administrator. I was a middle school principal in a 235-kid school in Hull, and then to an 1,100-kid school, to a 2,300-kid school. Just in terms of scale and scope, I have, and that's been very purposeful on my part in order to be able to have an understanding of what it takes to oversee a school district with thousands of kids and hundreds of teachers. And so that is a very clear progression I've done very deliberately to help prepare me for this. Along the way, I have asked for opportunities to be part of strategic planning groups, I've asked, and the strategic planning process in two districts, the bargaining process and negotiations to really get an understanding and sit down and understand the budget process. And again, the budget process, there are very clear kind of, of, kind of procedures that schools do in common, and there are also idiosyncrasies that are very unique to individual districts. And being able to have those, really being a part of a school and district-wide leadership team, I've been a part of curriculum, district curriculum teams, district groups that are looking at particular topics, discipline being one of them in Lexington recently. And so I think that, from my perspective, I've been preparing this for the last, I'd say, seriously, 10 years. And, so thus, the idea of a superintendency does not frighten me in any way, shape, or form, it excites me. I wouldn't have been able to say that 10 years ago. That would have scared me to death 10 years ago. I think that my personal qualities, I think, are real strengths in terms of building relationships in a lot of ways, you know, the superintendent, in addition to the kind of, again, the what, right? The how is really, really important, because you've got to be able to interact with different people from different walks of life, from different cultures, from different professions, both town-side, both school-side, and community-side. And I think I'm really good at that. And if I went back to my upbringing in northern Vermont with the amount of socioeconomic diversity that was in my class on any given day, I can talk to anybody from any walk of life. It's the greatest gift that I got from that place. And so, that said, I also will name it, I'm a principal. I haven't been, I haven't worked in the central office on a day-to-day basis. I haven't been a superintendent. And while there's a lot of the what that I know, you know, there's a lot that I would, I will absolutely have to learn while on the job. And I think that, you know, again, I welcome the idea with, and I think that it's fantastic that there is a mentoring program that pairs, you know, new superintendents with veteran superintendents, so that you're not sitting there in the pool completely alone, you're treading water with someone else as well, who knows and could be a resource for you. And I think that, you know, for my professional development piece, that's, you know, I think in terms of really, I know what it's, I know what the process for entry is like as a principal, because I've done it three different times, four different times, three different times. I'm losing track. And, you know, the superintendency is that and more. And so, you know, I think that that's going to be the biggest focus of my professional growth, is really about getting my feet under me and learning the process, and specifically truly budget.
Thank you very much.
I also looked at him, too.
I couldn't tell what the time is.
Oh, Mike, did I go? I'm good. If your current staff were to, were asked to identify your greatest weakness, what would they say? How would you know that they would respond that way?
I think they would say the thing I would need to be, that they all would agree that I need to work on is brevity. And I would know this because we, at times, I'm a verbal processor, and so it's a run a joke with all of us. And so that is, I'm sure that's what they would say.
So you touched on it a couple times earlier, but with all the stresses and everything else with kids and social-emotional, what's your opinion on students and homework and why?
When I was a teacher and I was just starting out, I felt like I needed to give kids something every single night, every single night. They needed to have something, or I wasn't going to have something to talk about. And it just felt like you had to do it. And my opinion on that matured as I matured as a teacher, because I think that, you know, homework can be very useful if it is moving the student, the class, the, that particular concept forward. And there is, you know, I think that there are a lot more options that teachers are able to give to students with regard to what homework is. That was very different from when I was in high school. A lot of it was just plug-and-chug, right? And there is a place at times for rote repetition for certain things. For me, that was, you know, not what I found to be valuable for students as much, and I, but I don't want to necessarily, there are other places where that does have a place, right? You know, it's got to have value, you know? What is the point of this? You know, how is this actually moving the student's understanding forward? How is it being assessed? I remember distinctly doing math problems, 50 of them in a night, when 20 would have been just fine and I would have gotten, I got it. And then the teacher would just go around and do a check that you literally wrote problems on your paper. No, no looking at whether or not it was done right, or feedback, or anything like that. Zero value. And so if the homework has value, then, and there's an ability to be able to provide feedback, and there's lots of ways to be able to do that, because you can do that with students assessing each other's homework as well, talking to each other about what they did, as well as the teacher, then there's value to it. When it's, you know, doesn't have that kind of feedback loop, or, you know, is one that is just there for the purpose of having something to do, there's no value to it whatsoever. And so, again, it goes back to, you know, what do we think valuable homework looks like as a school, as a district, as, and such?
What is the most important decision you have made in the last year or two? How did you go about developing your decision or course of action? And what alternatives did you consider?
We had to make a lot of decisions over the last year, a ton of them. We had to, I guess I'd say, the most important decision, I'll go right to it, was what we were going to do for dealing with students who were coming into school on a bi-weekly basis, because that's what the cohorting was in Lexington. Cohort A is one week, cohort B is another week. We had to come up with a schedule for that. That was one decision. And then what we were going to do with the half of the school that was fully remote at the same time. And we had to make a decision on what that was, what was going to happen with that. And so, you know, part of developing the course of action was, you know, you're really, rare is the time in schools that you have to make a decision like that. You usually have time in schools. There are places where you don't have a lot of time to process, but those are pretty rare. And so a lot of the times, you do have the ability to pull together a group, and a group of people that you trust, a group of people that are knowledgeable, a group of people specifically that can talk about implications. You know, I think that, well, that's the biggest thing with schools, is if you don't have the right people in the room and you decide something, if you don't have that either historical memory or the true understanding of what that's going to look like, there are unforeseen implications that can really derail something. And so it's really important to try to figure that out upfront. So we pulled together, it was part of our schedule group as well, you know, teachers, you know, there were some teachers and, you know, a lot of the master scheduler and the administration team at the high school, because the high school was doing it totally differently than the middle and the elementary schools, which could do a remote academy that we just couldn't do for a lot of different reasons. And so that was a lot of hashing out back and forth in terms of what the best route is. And then we knew going into it that the classrooms weren't ready, that we didn't have the technology there at the start, that we knew we were going to have to build upon. And we knew that there was money coming from the government, from COVID, in order to be able to get some technology, we had to bring in community groups that donated money to be able to get teachers an extra computer in the class, a Jabra, and Bluetooth headphones to be able to do what they ended up doing, which was, when the kids were in school, the remote kids were piping in at the same exact time, real time, for the whole year. And so thus, there wasn't loss of momentum for any kid. And if a kid who was in school had to be out, they could just go remote and still be able to continue that momentum. And it was clunky, and it was rough, and it was fraught, but that was a decision we had to make. And in the end, it was the best decision, and I had teachers at the end of the year saying that was the best decision that we could have made, who at the beginning of the year were absolutely scared to death about it, as was I.
Thank you.
Stevens, please tell us about a time when you had to use your judgment to deal with or heard a crisis of some kind.
So I've talked to you about the different examples where there were, we had a sexual assault allegation that was alleged to have occurred on school grounds, and it was out. and it was out among the student population. And so we had to work with that. We also had one where I was in a leadership team meeting where we got an email bomb threat at 9:00 in the morning. And we had to, you know... That's the one that we really had to quickly develop, what are we going to do? Because if we're going to send kids home, we've got to do it by like 10 o'clock because there are a ton of bus runs. And so that was a, you know, a good procedure that we had, which was local crisis team that we immediately, as soon as we got the email, we froze it so that nobody else could see it. And so that was involving our tech department immediately. It was... In order to then, you know, so we didn't want students to see it either. And it was sent to us first. And then it was bringing in police, it was bringing in fire. And we had good relationships and a liaison, ISRO for the police and liaison for the fire department and brought in the superintendent, brought in and had a real focused crisis team that was meeting to think about, how are we going to address this particular situation? And so I think the thing that we avoided, we ultimately... We couldn't confirm that it was not a threat. And thus, we had to send everybody home. And that was... There was a communication process that we wanted to think about, to be transparent, to try to let parents and kids know what was going on and why. And it was an abundance of caution. And then, you know, line up and have all the locker searched in the various areas, et cetera, et cetera. And then to keep people apprised on an ongoing basis over the course of the next day and evening. And then to have a bigger presence for, you know, students coming in as we were also trying to figure out who did this. And so the crisis, I think, that was averted in that particular scenario was tied to really being able to contain what that was so that it wasn't an outright, you know, kind of panic that happened with that. And I thought we dealt with it as well as we possibly could have.
Thank you.
Long question. What have you accomplished in your career to improve students' academic success and specifically increase the number of students in honors and AP classes? What would you implement to increase the number of multicultural students in honors or AP classes as well as improve their sense of belonging?
Yeah, the data's... Just speaking from where I am in Lexington, the data's really clear in terms of representation in, by level. And at the lowest level of representation at Lexington, at that... For the highest level classes are among our Black and Hispanic students and special ed, which I think often gets forgotten as well. That... And, you know, then that becomes a question of, if we're talking about ways that we want to try to equity of access, then that's a clear delineation. It's hard because AP courses are hard. You know, one of the things that we did in my... One of my prior districts was we looked at AP classes that were open enrollment. If you wanted to take an AP class, you got to take it. It wasn't necessarily every class. Calculus is kind of hard to take if you haven't done or taken the classes that give you the basis to be able to succeed at that. That's not the one you look at. Psychology, statistics, world history, those were all AP classes that were perfectly capable for anybody to be able to take. And we made those open enrollment. I don't... I probably shouldn't say this, but I don't really lose sleep at night over AP scores. I don't lose sleep at all over AP scores. Most colleges are not giving credit for AP scores. So it's not like it's saving kids money. They may allow them to accelerate their kind of program. And for me, I taught APUS. And I remember a young lady who went in and was in that class and she got a two on the exam. And she got more out of that course in terms of writing skills, analytical skills, learning to read for bias, and, you know, just general work ethic than this other student who could have taught the course better than I did and who had a five the moment he walked in the room. And if we're talking about the fact that we want our kids to go to, you know, by and large, you know, many of, if not most of the kids are going to college, right? The minute they leave high school, they're in college. They're taking, you know, they're not taking an AP course, they're taking a college course. So why are we finding ways to limit that for kids? We should be looking for ways to broaden that access and that experience. And that's one way of being able to do it. At Lexington, we also instituted the stretch program, which was, you know, teachers who had a kid who was right on the line but that they felt that with, you know, some supports, like we have a general ed learning center that kids can be referred to, that they could do it and to encourage the kids. Because sometimes what kids do is they, you know, see the load and they don't want to do it necessarily because they don't necessarily think they can do it or that for a lot of different reasons. And so encouraging kids to stretch and then tracking how they're doing with that was another program that was instituted to try to encourage students to maybe move beyond what they think they're entirely capable of. And isn't that a level of success that we want to try to measure? That kids move outside their comfort zone in order to grow? Those are a couple of ways that we went around, especially with an eye on special ed students and some of our BIPOC students.
Thank you.
How do you see the role of the superintendent in collaboration with the school committee in collective bargaining? What are your experiences at the bargaining table?
I've had experiences from the bargaining side of it. I was part of a couple of bargaining teams with Unit A in my prior district. It was a totally different bargaining process. It was interest-based bargaining that had been taken on, I think, for the first time with Unit A, which is the teacher's unit, that had a federal mediator and such. I'd also been a part of more traditional kind of bargaining formats with custodians and paras as well. And I think that one of the areas in terms of as a superintendent, going back to my professional development, going back to, would be having an understanding of what that role is within the superintendent role in terms of it. You know, I think that the role of the superintendent in collaboration with the school is to be a part of that process. I've seen it where the superintendent is in with a town manager and a school committee member at every single bargaining session. There was a district where that was, that's what occurred. I've seen it where the superintendent is not in the room and that the... It's the school committee member and the town, possibly town manager, but, you know, the different representatives for administration and for management and for labor are doing that. And then, you know, when there's the caucus aspect of it is then the superintendent is consulted and talks about, well, if they want this, then this is going to happen and talks implications. And I've seen things in between. And so, you know, from my end of it is that, you know, I think there needs to be clearly a presence and understanding of what those particular issues are. I really valued my superintendent reaching out to the administrative team to ask about what are things in the contract that are poorly worded from your particular contracts or notoriously poorly worded? And so, you know, what are some of the things that if you wanted to, we'd want to be able to try to address in this round of contract negotiations? Now, that may not make it to the table, but at least there was some agency to try to address some of the things that from the users, right? From the people who actually have to implement the contract with the same thing happening on the teaching side, you know, to some degree. And so I think that the superintendent has a really important role in the bargaining process. Whether, you know, whatever form that takes. I'm not familiar with what the form that it takes in Stoughton. But, you know, there needs to be a presence and there needs to be a real deep understanding of what both the issues are, what's being brought to the table, and an ability to be able to articulate the implications. Whether you're talking about money, whether you're talking about wording, whether you're talking about time, whatever it is that you're talking about. I want to give time for the last question.
And how would you keep the school committee informed? What is your strategy around issues that are your responsibility but where the school committee may have an interest?
Sure. You know, statutory responsibilities of school committee are really the policymaking body of the district. Budget oversight, among other things. But those are two big responsibilities that are connected to school committees. And, you know, ed reform put a lot more management kind of power in the hands of superintendents and site-based management in the hands of principals and the formation of site councils and such. You know, and I think that those structures, you know, I have never worked when they are delineated that clearly. Because, you know, if you really think about it, everything is ultimately connected to policy. You know, when you're talking about, you know, because the policies that the school committee develops are following state law and they also are the things that are supposed to be followed. They're supposed to provide consistency, safety, lots of different things. And so, you know, I think that anything that's connected to, you know, policy or, you know, they're the kind of regular things that you're doing that are updates that are happening. And there's a lot that has to occur as it comes up as well. And there's a lot that ultimately would probably have the interest of the school committee. And the school committee is also a group of elected officials and people have a right to bring concerns and issues to their elected officials. And so I think that on my side of it, you know, I always wanted to operate. I operate with my administrators with a no-secrets approach. If something's coming up that you think is going to come my way, let me know about it. I may not act on it, but at least I know it's coming. I don't want secrets. I don't want surprises. I tend to operate the same way with... And I would operate the same way with school committee. If there was something that ultimately was going to be coming your way or that was going to be, whether an issue either from a public standpoint or anything on that end of it, I would want to try to keep informed. And there are ways to do that. There are the, you know, that is the, you know, as it comes up. And then there's also just the weekly update of here's what's going on. And I think that it's important to keep the school committee informed with what's going on while also balancing the fact that you don't need the minutia of every management thing that's going on in the school. That's my job and you don't need that. And so trying to filter that as well. And then it also works the other way around as well. You know, something comes to you that you think is, you know, information ultimately needs to, you know, maybe some hoop jumping that's occurred tends to happen sometimes. Then it may have to go down to the place where it needs to... Where a conversation needs to happen first, maybe the classroom. And so I think that works both ways. But, you know, honesty, transparency is usually the best policy, I've found.
That was good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, thank you so much. That concludes the questions for the evening. There was a lot of questions that you just answered, by the way.
Yes. I didn't realize there was another side to this until I was halfway through.
That's what I showed her. I'm like, we have backup, we're going through these fast. But we really appreciate the time you took to answer all of these and to be here this evening. I would like to give you the last five minutes, right? Yeah, to give a closing statement.
It's not going to be five minutes, I hope.
I hope so.
So I alluded to this in a different metaphor in my first interview, but, you know, I've often heard or equated the superintendency as being described like being a conductor of an orchestra. Having to be able to understand the part each instrument plays, how it contributes to the section, and how the sections come together to create a layered and unified sound that seamlessly brings harmony to what otherwise are very different sounding instruments. The conductor sets the tempo and has an ear for the tones and the sounds being produced, adjusting, providing feedback, both in the moment and individually, pushing, challenging the performers to elevate their individual and group performance all for the betterment of the orchestra and the players. I believe that my leadership experience and my background has proven me to be a very good conductor and that if given the chance, I can become a great one for this district. I've shown my commitment to districts where I've worked and I want to commit to this one because it is moving in exciting directions. I hope you see the value that I can bring to this district with regard to what I know, how I lead, and that I have a strong capacity for growth. Given the intersection between where Stoughton is heading and my abilities as a leader, I think we can create wonderful music. I hope you'll contact anyone you know in Duxbury or Hull or Lexington who has ever worked with me because I think that they will reinforce that the skills and qualities I possess and the need for brevity at times. I hope that will be ones that you see as a fit for this position. I really appreciate your time. It's late. I know you've been here for four-plus hours that you've given me and also to the Stoughton citizens and community and the kids. Thanks for having me here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Drive safe.